Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors for January 9, 2024. This is our first meeting of the new year. And we will be going into closed session. We have one item in closed session. Madam Clerk, would you like to read that out for us?
Yes, Item 1, Pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel, Re-existing Litigation, Minnica versus County Workers' Compensation Appeals Board Case Number ADJ 17142363.
Thank you. Are there any public comments in the room? Seeing none in the room? Are there any online?
There are none online.
Okay, we will go into closed session. Good morning and welcome to the first meeting, regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors for 2024. Please stand if you can for the pledge.
Supervisor Paulendorf, can you please lead us?
We had a closed session this morning at 8:00 a.m. Ms. Clerk, can you please read out?
Sorry. Item 1, Pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel, Re-existing Litigation, Minnica versus County Workers' Compensation Appeals Board Case Number ADJ 17142363. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. We will move on to the next item, which is staff announcements. Are there any staff announcements? Lisa? Kathy?
Hey, dear, I'm getting ready to start talking here.
I'll pick you if you don't want to, if you want.
Rick is on.
Wait a minute.
Have the whole sound.
So, good morning, Chair Toffenelli, respective board members. Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency Administrator. Today, I bring long-awaited news and would like to inform you that in addition to our new cat and kitten foster program, we now have a dog and puppy foster program. Behind me is the staff. CCAS staff are some of our dog volunteers and we cannot exist without them. We are so truly grateful for everything that they do and they're going to be a large part of this collaborative effort towards making sure that our animals in our, in our community are taken care of. So, first of all, I'd like to give an applause to them. So that's the long-awaited news. It's been a long time coming. Fostering will provide our homeless dogs and puppies with a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment. Fostering will also provide additional socialization in preparation for adoption. Fostering will also give our long-term residents time away from the shelter. Fostering will allow our pups and dogs to medically recover in a relaxing, uplifting, and loving environment. Most of all, dedicating, the dedication of fostering allows CCAS to help even more animals in our community. We would like to thank upfront and future foster families for their willingness to open their hearts and their homes to our homeless pups and dogs, and we are truly grateful for good humans. We will begin implementing this program immediately and would like to thank staff, our volunteers, focus members, and our future community foster folks. There may be some in the crowd, I see. A few already. This has been a long process in making and we are grateful for all those that have collaborated to make this happen. We look forward to meeting our future foster and family soon and good humans. That's all we have. I would just want to give another applause to everybody. And that is all I have. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Questions? Good job.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning.
Is this home? Can you hear me? Okay, good. Kathy Glieno, your Economic and Community Development Director. Man, that is so exciting. I want a foster. But what I was going to mention today is that next week, on Wednesday, from 10 to noon, we have our first drop-in Business Assistance Center that will be at the Board Overflow Chamber right next door. I'm working in collaboration with GoBiz and the Office of Small Business Advocate. We're going to be working with small businesses that may be interested in startup or expansion. It's a great new program. I have some brochures, brochures here or some information, and I'll leave those here for anybody interested. So, any businesses that are interested in starting up or expanding or have questions, need help with financing or other opportunities, please drop by next Wednesday on the 17th from 10 to noon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff announcements in the room? Seeing none. I see we have the Sheriff online. Sheriff, you have an announcement for us?
I do. Good morning, Chair Toffenelli and board members. Happy New Year. Hope things are going well for you. I just wanted to touch bases with you all. I know that a while back here Supervisor Gueramendi had asked about our search and the cost. I have some numbers for you. I wanted to share that with you and the community. First and foremost, I wanted to let you all know that the family members were very happy with the contact that we stayed in, with them, and that Ann was a returner. They wanted to pass on their gratitude to the county as a whole for what we did for them and their family. We had a total of eight days that we searched. We had eight, or 17 agencies. We had 137 search teams. We had 494 total searchers. We had 34 dogs out there. We had a total of 3,987 searchers. That would have equated to just over $85,000 had that not been done through the volunteer program, search and rescue, and all the other counties helped out with. We had 276 dog hours, which would have equated to almost $6,000. Air support, we had free agent fees. We had the National Guard, the U.S. Army, CHP. We had a total of 40 air search hours, which would have cost at about $100,000. We had 24 hours of National Guard and Army Black Hawk, $3,116 per hour if we had rented it. CHP had 16 hours, and it lists goes on here. Donated lunches, a big shout out to Moose Lodge up in Arnold. They donated 494 lunches that had cost a little over $3,000. We had Pooja Sanitary donated to Portobello Restaurant, of course, because of the amount of people that we had out there. The CCAS over five hours was just over $1,500, which was a total cost of about $77,000. Hotel rooms, we had 25 hotel rooms. Radio purchases, we had 1,080 purchases for food and fuel. So, to answer your question Supervisor Gueramendi, the total cost to the county was just over $93,000. It was $93,087. How did the actual cost to the county? Cost not paid by Calaveras, that includes everything that I had just previously mentioned, was $195,133. The total cost for that search for eight days was $288,217. That was what it would have cost the county had we had to pay for everything. Again, out of pocket for the county was just over $93,000. Any questions on that item?
Supervisor Gueramendi?
Sheriff, this is Jack. I thank you very much for that information and I appreciate, I mean, you're in the moment. You're dealing with these search and rescues. You've got to do what you've got to do. We're just trying to figure out how to pay for it at the end and that's our part of the deal. So, congratulations and I'm sorry we didn't have a, an outcome of a rescue, but I appreciate and I'm sure and to thank family on the recovery and all the volunteers that worked on this and officers. Thank you.
Absolutely. We'll figure out where the money talks about the board on Supervisor Toffenelli's budget.
It will be soon, probably Gueramendi's budget, so. Supervisor Hubbard, you have the lights on?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you, Sheriff, for all of this work, but also thank you for being proactive in your office, setting up the meeting this week to discuss how we can prevent this from happening again with the proper signage, et cetera, on the rim trail.
Yeah, and that's something that definitely needs to be done. I'm glad you stuck your fingers in that pie to help us out in these cases. The other thing I wanted to mention to folks is we're going to have an Ag Pass training session. That's going to be coming up here pretty quick. What it entails is an emergency livestock pass, and I'm going to read this so I don't miss anything. The emergency livestock pass was originally developed during the Butte Fire. As you well know, we had so many animals that we needed to get out. It was a cluster, to say the least. I was not the sheriff at the time. We had other people at Animal Services. It was a fiasco. So, when I became the sheriff, we really started focusing on this. Now, the government, the legislature's actually passed something that it's mandated that we do this. But I just want you folks to know that we have been doing this. We're going to provide a uniform way for emergency service workers to identify vetted ranch owner operators and their employees. The possession of an emergency ranch access pass during a wildfire or similar disaster or all-hazard emergency potentially allows the agriculturalist with 10 or more head of livestock or beehives with limited emergency access to areas that may otherwise be restricted to the public. The state now requires formal training as part of the application process. The emergency ranch access pass card is applied for and distributed to eligible agriculturalists prior to a disaster. And the possession of an emergency ranch access pass does not necessarily mean the car holder is guaranteed access through road closures. And that, you need to understand that that will be talked about during the class, that, you know, if there's a road that is actually closed because it's a fire apparatus blocking it, or we have water lines across the road, it's not a guarantee you're going to be able to get in. They need to understand. And then beginning in January of 2024, Calaveras County Sheriff's Office, in partnership with Cal Fire, will be holding classroom-based training sessions for those who may qualify for the class. I see Under Sheriff Whiting in the crowd, he may be able to give you the date. I don't have the date of when those classes are going to start, but I know they're coming up pretty quick. But I just wanted to make sure that you folks knew and the public knew that we are working on something. Part of it's legislatively mandated, but we've been working on this for quite a while, prior to the state saying that we need to do this. So, any questions for me, or I can turn it over to Under Sheriff Whiting, who might be able to give you some of those dates.
I think Supervisor Stocker has a question.
Not so much a question as a statement, Rick. Just you being proactive and developing relationships across the state and working with other agencies has made it possible for a lot of these collaborations and getting help and support throughout Calaveras County. And I just want to say, good job and appreciate that type of work.
And I got to put those, put those down to my folks, because they're the ones that are doing the legwork. I'm just the pretty face on the paper.
And on screen, you're multiple.
There you go. Alan White's doing.
Any other board questions?
The first Ag Pass training date is actually this week, January 11th.
Rochelle, can you come up to the microphone?
Sure.
Good morning. The first Ag Pass training date is this week, January 11th, at our headquarters in San Andreas, from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. And we have two more dates coming up, January 27th and February 21st. And any ranch owners interested in it, anyone that needs a pass, we encourage you, you need to come and attend one of the training dates. And there'll be representatives there from Sheriff's Office, OES, and Cal Fire to answer questions during the trainings. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations on your graduation from the FBI Academy.
Thank you, sir.
That was all I have, Chair Toffenelli. So unless you have any questions else for me, I will sit back and look pretty.
I think we're done. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Any other staff announcements online?
There are no further staff announcements online.
All right. With that being said, we will move on to the next item, which is general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter, jurisdiction of the board, and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda, may be addressed during public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. So, is there any public comments this morning?
Good morning. This is Terry Nubrid, New California State Committee Chair and Senator and a longtime resident of District 2. On January 15, 2018, New California did its Declaration of Independence from the State of California. And I'd like to do a remembrance of that and also to let you know that next Monday, we will be doing the same Declaration of Independence because the law said at the end of the term, we will be the 51st state quite soon here. And we are open to the public to join us at the state Capitol as we do this. First, an affirmation of allegiance to the United States of America and justification for the formation of the state of California, of New California, pardon me, January 15, 2018. With faith, diligence, and our sacred arm, we do hereby declare our unity with natural law of the United States of America's Constitution. We stand firm in our pledge to maintain and support the freedom of the people of our nation and New California at all times, at home and abroad, with God as our witness, all the foundational principles, and take the obligation free without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion to stand together as free citizens of New California to be a sovereign state of that nation which we hold dear, the United States of America. As we seek to remain a member of that nation to form a perfect union, we must all to create the free, sovereign, and independent state of New California due to the past and current government of California, having failed in the oath of office, obligations, and responsibilities as representatives of the native people to provide a republican former government, get as guaranteed by Article 4, Section 4 of the United States Constitution. Declaration of Independence, intention of forming the state of New California, January 15, 2018, holding these truths to be self-evident and all known and all created, equaling that they are endowed by their Creator with certain rights and privileges, and are worthy, propitious, and pursued happiness. To secure these rights, God has taught us tutored, of right, of justice, and of justice, powers from consent over government. While, when the course of human events becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have been, have connected them with the metal, and to assume, I don't have my reading glasses, so be with me, to assume among them the powers of the earth, the separate and equal station to reach the laws of nature, and nature's God entitle them that they could declare the causes which cause them to separate. Whatever informal government becomes a structure of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation in such principles and organizations organizing its powers in such design as most likely to affect our safety and happiness. Governments long established should not be changed for light and transient reasons. And according to our experiences, has shown mankind was more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to write themselves by abolishing the forms in which they are accustomed. However, when a long-term abuse is an act to seize and hold the people's pride without reappealing and pursuing invariably the same object, the current demonstrates a design to reduce them under the absolute disposition, it is the right, it is the duty to throw off such government, to provide new laws for our security. I won't have time. Please look at our website. It's basically our Declaration of Independence. And I thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Happy New Year, Board. Jeanne Gonzalez, District 4. I put before you something that I didn't want to repeat the quote, but as you can see, it's very obnoxious. Our policies and procedures for the animal's barking issue is an issue. I have an animal barking constantly at my house. My neighbors are afraid of this guy and absolutely will not deal with him for, as you can see, why. I will deal with him. I have no problem confronting somebody that's rude and obnoxious at all and putting them in their place, but it's not right. The right is the law. The law needs to be changed as far as the code. The code in our county says, fill out this form, file a complaint. You know what? I should not have to be subject to this dog barking constantly. The guy doesn't live here. He lives in Dublin. His mother's living at his house. He, his mom is deaf. She can't hear. So she doesn't hear the dog barking. My son is going off to college. He's up all night long waking me up. Mom, the dog's barking again. Okay, I'll call him. I call him and that is what I get. You see the text message. It's disrespectful. I have tried to be nice to him. I would like to see somebody in Calaveras County Board tell me what direction to go. The log will not work with him. Okay? It will not work with him. Calaveras County Animal Services should not have to, I shouldn't have to go to my neighbors and say, hey, fill out a log. Hey, fill out a log. Hey, fill out a log. That is not what we do. We go and we knock on the door quietly and professionally and say, hey, dude, you have an issue here. You have a neighbor that can't sleep. So I don't know what to do. You guys give me ideas? You guys know how to get ahold of me? I would be glad to walk this walk, but I'm to here. It's not right. It's inconsiderate. It's very disrespectful. And I've got four neighbors that are afraid of him to say something or go that log. You guys have a log in front of you. What would you do? Would you deal with a neighbor like that? Probably not. I will. I have no problem dealing with him. I'll wait for him to get there on Friday night when he shows up for this truck. I promise you. But I don't want to do that. I'd like to be kind and respectful and thoughtful and say, hey, you know what, dude? We really need to work on this. Come on. Feed your dog. Take your dog in the house. Last night, he was howling all night. As you can see the bags, it's not from being old. It's from being tired. So I would appreciate if anybody could help me get an answer. I would love to follow that rather than the path I might lead. But thank you for your time.
Is there public comments?
Good morning, Board. Bonnie Owen from Double Springs. Double Springs has suffered a lot of indignities over the years, besides having the county seat stolen from us, having our hotel burned down three times in the 1800s, all the way up to having our speed limit signs removed and not reinstalled. So now we have a freeway down Double Springs. The latest one I heard was, well, when I moved here, we were District 5, which was Valley Springs. And then 20 years later, they told us, now you're District 1. And I heard recently, we're getting thrown into District 2. Makes us feel kind of unimportant. But besides that, no matter who my supervisor is, I think this is something that might affect all of you and all of us. And it's, last summer, there was this ratty, broken-down, crappy-looking RV parked at the top of Double Springs. It was there for about three or four months. I don't know if it was abandoned, but it sat there forever. Last week, it showed up again. I was all ready to come down here, but for some reason, this morning, it was gone. Now, yesterday, I talked to a sheriff who was parked on Double Springs and asked him what he could do. And he says, there's nothing they can do. People are allowed to live in their trailers, parking anywhere they want, looking like crap, just making the whole, my house is falling apart because I'm too old to fix it up anymore. But you got people start living in tents and trailers and broken-down RVs, perpetuating the Stockton sprawl. We're going to end up with people under bridges. And I'm just kind of afraid it's, I'm looking at driving by this piece of junk all summer long until winter comes and they've got to go somewhere else. But if there's something that the supervisors can look at, an ordinance, or introduce to the planning department, or something that folks don't have to live with junk around them, and possibility of burglary and break-ins, and, thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Mr. Myers?
Hey, I just noticed something on the consent agenda. And I think you ought to take it off the consent agenda and think about it a little bit.
We'll get to there right now. Anything not on the consent agenda?
Okay, I'm just, I've got to go. I'm sorry. But anyway, it's, it's, okay. When is the proper time to ask you to take something off the consent agenda?
Right after the consent agenda is coming up. Then you can come up and pull an item off. Any other public comments? Seeing none? I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Stocker, you have a comment?
Just to go along with staff comments, it's, today is Public Law Enforcement Day, and I just want to give tribute to the public law enforcement on their day. So, yeah, that's all.
All right, we'll close with a new public comment and we'll go on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Is there any board member which pull an item off of consent? Is there any staff member which pull an item off of consent? Any online?
There are no online requests.
All right, any member of the public? Now you can come up, Guy.
Yes, you have something on the agenda. Which item it is? Funding for the Sheriff's Department. I think you should fund for the Sheriff's Department.
What item is it?
Is there a gentleman floating up here? Is there an agenda floating up here?
It could be possibly eight, sir.
Okay, it's, it's got to be, you're funding a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars for a company out of, uh...
Okay, so I just need an agenda item for right now, and then we'll bring that item back.
Agenda here, I can go out to my car and get my cellphone and look up the agenda.
If you're talking about the sixty thousand, that would be...
It's a hundred and twenty thousand, sixty a piece, yeah.
Huh?
Hundred and sixty-five, I didn't have a mind.
Number nine, so you would like...
Oh, it's sixty, but when you're buying ammunition and...
He's referring to...
Okay, all right, well, we're gonna...
It's sixty thousand dollars.
We're gonna pull item number eight, and then we'll go, we'll bring it right back. Okay, so, item number eight is pulled by Guy. Any other member of the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I'm open for a motion for the remainder of consent.
So moved, sir.
I have a motion by Supervisor Stoffer, second by Ballendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Now, Guy, come up, this is item number eight, and this is an action item from the sheriff to authorize the purchasing agent to issue a blanket purchase order, a PO, to Dooley Enterprises Incorporated and Axon Enterprises Incorporated, and then not to exceed an amount of sixty thousand dollars each for the acquisition of law enforcement, ammunition, and TASER equipment respectively during the current fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, so, just in twenty-twenty-two, I was in here grapping at you guys about not funding the Sheriff's Department properly, so I'm not against this funding a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for these items. However, I think the way you're doing it, you're not going to get as good a bang for your buck, because you're allotting it to two different companies, okay? Neither one of those companies, I shouldn't say neither one, I don't know about the sighting system, that company I haven't looked into them, so I don't know. The Dooley Enterprises, a little bit, I looked up on them, they're not an ammo manufacturer, and they're not an ammo distributor from the standpoint of a big distributor, okay? In the firearms industry, there's some big distributors, Sports South, Brown House, there's some, I think you would get a better bang for your buck, is if you allotted this money somehow without earmarking it to a particular individual company, because then they're kind of, you're kind of, the Sheriff's Department is kind of at the mercy of going with that company regardless of whatever margin they're making on it, okay? And, or they'd have to come back to you guys and ask you, we allocated it to somebody else. Now, in the last thirty-six months, the ammunition business has been very volatile, very volatile, up and down, okay? I've sold, just to give you an example, I've retailed nine-millimeter for as much as a dollar thirty-three a round, okay? Currently, it's selling for retail about twenty-seven cents a round, okay? So, and it's just, like I say, it's been kind of like the, the stock market in the, right now ammo prices are lower, they should be able to get a, a good deal. Also, the industry puts on a convention, this year, it's coming up in a couple, a couple weeks. I would suggest you invest the money, send a couple officers down that has some knowledge of the scopes in sighting systems. There's been a tremendous amount of upgrading those systems from year to year, and I don't know what they're trying to buy, whether they're just trying to buy some red dot sights, or trying to buy some night vision stuff. Night vision stuff, the good night vision stuff can be up to seventy-eight thousand dollars a, a unit for the latest and greatest, but whatever, it would probably be worth the investment of the Sheriff's Department or the county to authorize the Sheriff's Department, send a couple guys down there. You know, they, they have about sixty thousand square feet of exhibits, where the entire buildings is dedicated to law enforcement, okay? So, and I don't know if, I go with you, but I don't know if for law enforcement, there's a fee, if there is, it's like a hundred bucks a piece or something, it's not very much. But that would be my suggestion is putting this off unless they're down to their last round, and trust me, I'm happy to be in the business of selling ammunition so I can loan some.
Your time is up.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you, Gary. Guy, sorry.
You're Gary, young guy.
Yeah, that's right.
It's confusing sometimes, I know.
Thank you, Guy. Michelle?
Sir, thank you very much. We appreciate Guy's comments, it's very true, the need to ensure that we are doing product comparisons and availability of which the Sheriff's Office does do. We do invest in our range staff in attending not only post-certified trainings, but other events offered by vendors and trade shows, things like that, we do participate in that as well as a collaboration with all firearms instructors in the state and across the nation and the discussions that are had. With that, this item does not restrict us with solely using Dooley, so if throughout the course of the year, if it is determined that we can get a better product in a more fiscally responsible way, we always ensure we were. This item is simply a blanket purchase request order that allows us not to have to come back before the board every time we have to make a purchase that crosses over the purchasing policy threshold for the county, so I want to assure you with that, this does not say that we will be locked in to Dooley or Axon. That being said, we are not asking for any additional requests of funding at this time, this is already within our allocations that were passed by through with the budget and already expressed in our capital projects that were already approved by the board for the year, so therefore, the only thing we're doing this morning is just asking for the blanket purchase order request for those two companies, both Axon and Dooley, that allows us to make the purchases, but I assure you, if we determine that there is another vendor that we should be using that's more fiscally responsible, we will do so. Any questions by the board?
Thank you, Sheriff Whiting, that's on point and exactly what I was thinking.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any other public comments on this item in the room?
No, we're answered, Myers. They have to like to use that money.
Okay, all right, we'll bring it back to the board. So moved. A motion by Supervisor Stoffer?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Hubbard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We move on to the regular agenda, this is item ten, and before I go on to item ten, I just want to thank all of the department heads and all of the staff in the county for the past year and working with them, and all of the staff has done a very good job, tremendous job. It's been very good pleasure for me to work with all of you, the clerk's office, all the people in the clerk's office, thank you very much, and admin, and county council, and the rest of the staff throughout the county, and thank you very much for a great year, and the board itself, I think we worked very well together over the course of the last year, and it's been a real pleasure being chair.
Thank, thank you for your leadership, sir.
Well, thank you. With that, we'll move on to action item number ten, it's the clerk of the Board of Supervisors, election of the twenty-twenty-four Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors. I'm open for nominations, Supervisor Stoffer?
Do we want to wait for, do it now and then public comment?
Well, we can do nominations and have public comment on the nomination.
I, I think we've been, we've been pre, you know, since, since I've gotten on the board and we've been working together, and then we've brought Amanda and Martin on board, we've stuck to a certain order, and I would definitely be privileged to be able to ask for us, make a motion for Supervisor Garminia's Chair and Supervisor Hubbard as Vice Chair.
Any other comments by the board? Seeing none, we'll bring it, we'll open it up to public comment, is there any public comment on this item in the room?
Good morning again, Terry McCall, New California State and Chairman and Senator, most importantly, lifelong resident, fifth generation of this county. Whoever is head of this Board of Supervisors, please remember your oath to our Constitution of the United States because Saturn in twenty-twenty was put into the plan. Have the power to say no to unconstitutional evics and mandates. When the people are frightened because of what was being thrown down in the third at the time, that truth, even those people are there, they understand their constitutional rights protected, because everyone has the right to run a mosque, everyone has the right to socially distance, but we should have enforced, and that is unconstitutional. So all I'm asking is, do a great job. God bless you for doing all the work that you do, I really do appreciate all that you are doing and that. Do you know that our Constitution is the greatest one on this earth, and I need you standing up for it. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, is there any public comments online?
There are no public comments online.
So I'll close public comments and bring it back to the board. I have a nomination, do I have a motion for the nomination?
I think that was the motion, so I'll second.
That was a motion, the nomination was the motion.
So I was second.
It was, okay, so I have a motion by Supervisor Stoffer, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Supervisor Ballendorf? Let's take a break. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero, congratulations.
My question is... Yeah, you should always be able to vote for yourself, it shows confidence in, you don't have confidence in yourself, Jack.
Never been accused of that, Ben. I want to thank you very much to my fellow board members, I want to thank Supervisor Toffenelli for his leadership this last year. It was a pleasure, I think you're correct, our board is working together, and even when we don't agree on everything, we work together to find positive solutions, and the thing I admire most about this board is, once a decision's made, we all jump in line and get it done. So, thank you all very much. Very well, and thank you for loaning me your gavel for less than meetings, Kaiser. Yes, sir?
Don't ignore your luck. I just wanted to add to your, to your sentiments, and just thank the Chair very much for making my first year a real pleasure, and I want to thank you because I, I want to thank you for your guidance, your advice, and always being an open ear, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And Martin, I want to thank you, it's going to be a lot more fun sitting next to you than Marita, and she was Vice Chair. She used to pinch me and poke me, it was horrible.
I'm a messenger now.
All right, getting back to business, and thank you very much, we'll move on to item number eleven, which is adoption of the twenty-twenty-four Board of Supervisors meeting calendar. Madam Clerk, do you have anything to go over on that?
No, just to point out that we do have, as long as the board still, we'd like to continue with the regular meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, that's what we have scheduled, with the only deviation in the month of December, with the one meeting to accommodate the holidays, which would be December tenth.
Anybody have any discussion or complaints about the calendar? Ben, no? Very well, a public comment?
I just have a question, why don't you guys have one at night? I just, I, I just, why, why, Tuolumne has them at night, Alameda County has them at night, not all the time, but there's a lot of the public that would like to come, but they have to make a living, so, I'm retired, I can come whenever you decide, but there's a lot of people that would like to come and address you guys and talk to you and meet you and, and help you guys, and they can't because they have to work. That's my opinion, sorry.
Supervisor Stoffer, you have a comment?
Just, the state law says on during regular meetings that they're to be held at nine AM on Tuesdays, but special meetings, if we were to have a special meeting, we could reschedule it for a different time. So, so if we were to have a special meeting, we would have the opportunity to if the board so decided, but with the regular agendas and the calendar, you'll see them at nine because of the way the state laws for, for supervisor meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. There are the public comments. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I, I do have a question.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I don't know when we're going to do midterm, whether it's going to be, probably not the next meeting, but sometime in February. I see we have three days set out for our June, for the upcoming agenda, do, do we maybe need another day to put on the calendar for...
I can speak, so I think we, we blocked off those days in June, I think there's actually four days blocked off, which I don't think anybody anticipates, or at least I hope, the budget won't take four days, but we can certainly, if the February meeting at which we're doing mid-year, if we needed to continue that into the following day, it would just be a continued session of the regular meeting, so it doesn't need to be marked, yeah, we can just continue it.
All right, I just want to make sure, you never know, there has been times in the past we did do four days of...
Oh, I know, not recently, though.
And two of them were the sheriff making presentations.
Very well, seeing no further public comment or comments from the board, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli, second?
Second.
Supervisor Hubbard, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to item twelve, assigning members of the Board of Supervisors to various committees. We are all, we don't have a changeover in the board and membership, so I guess what I'll ask is, is anybody looking for a change in their committee assignments? Supervisor Toffenelli and I had spoken briefly about Lafco, and him taking over on Lafco for me on this, is there anybody else who might want that trade? Okay, so, I'm good with that, is there anybody who wants to change up their committees at all?
The only thing that I would like to change is the Environmental Service, JPA, is have the, is it second alternate, Jan Ellis, for the time being.
Any objection to that? Okay. Anything else?
Supervisor Germany, I just wanted to clarify that with you and Supervisor Toffenelli, you will remain as the alternate.
No, Supervisor, I guess, fine, I'll go as the alternate.
Yeah, we're just switching, we switched last year and now...
Switched back, okay, thank you.
And I think there's a copy and paste, it's a duplicate, yeah.
Ballendorf and Ballendorf.
Probably a fine law firm, but...
I think your dad's.
Very well, okay, so, seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, you've got the changes. I'll become the alternate on Lafco, we'll move Jan Ellis to the second alternate on ESJPA.
Correct.
Is there a motion to Supervisor...
I have one more thing, the Strategic Planning and Finance Committee, we had set that up originally to be the Chair and Vice Chair. I think because we were in the middle of a couple things, you and I had stayed, but I'm not sure if that's something that, that the board wants to continue with, if there's a different interest. I'm fine, I just wanted to bring it up because it had started out as the Chair and Vice Chair, but you didn't know, you were busy, so Jack just had stayed on.
Would it, would it make sense if I went on as an alternate, and in that way if you wanted?
We can, I'm open to that, too.
So that way it would be...
I just want to say that you two have worked really well on that committee together, and I'm really happy with the results that have come out of it, and I, I'm comfortable with the same two staying on it.
Okay, okay.
As long as Martin's okay with it.
Yeah, fine, I'm fine, I just was saying, if it makes you feel better, if, if I was on as an alternate that way, that if you felt like you wanted to drop off, well...
I think we got busy.
Take a break, that's fine.
Yeah, we can, can we add an alternate on that?
Yes.
I can't remember how that was...
I don't see why not, I mean, it's a Brown Act body and, and the meeting's implied with a Brown Act, so I think it would be okay.
It's public meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll add Supervisor Hubbard again as an alternate, should Supervisor Ballendorf or I tap out?
Okay, okay, I just wanted to bring that up, I realized that was based off of Chair and Vice Chair. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, one more thing, just to bring up, Supervisor Ballendorf mentioned, just for the public and for, we will be adding CTA on the same line with the Calaveras Council of Government, so just as clear as that's COG and CTA on the list, because right now CTA is not listed.
That's, that's not a new, that's just, we're just adding it.
Right, just adding the, the clarification that it's part of it on the board.
All right, so if there's no further discussion, is there a motion from the board?
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor... Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli, second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. Okay, moving on to the item number 13, receiving a presentation from Tilson Technology on the draft countywide broadband strategic plan. Kathy, do you need a second to set up? All right.
Good morning. And I'll just ask a quick question. Make sure you can see the presentation. And then make sure that also that you, that you will be controlling the slideshow and I'll let you know when to change the slides.
We see it.
Perfect, thank you. And with the board's permission, I will go off camera during the presentation and then come back on. It's just a little less distracting that way.
Shelley, can I go ahead and introduce the item really quick?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development. Before you today, we have the draft broadband strategic plan. I have Shelley Westall from Tilson Technology that will be giving the presentation. I'll be advancing the slides. Also online, we have Barbara Hayes from RCRC, Golden State Finance Authority, who graciously funded through a grant this broadband strategic plan with EDA. We also have Stan Moore, our IT Information Officer from beautiful Arkansas. So what I want to mention about the broadband strategic plan just briefly is that it's more of a resource guide. It really compiles a lot of information, data, resources. This draft plan was made available through a grant from EDA to Golden State Finance Authority and made available to Calaveras County at no cost. So there was no cost to us for this document. Many of the recommendations and observations are in the document are currently underway by various staff members in Calaveras County. Stan Moore and I did provide comment along with GIS staff to the document. I know it was a lot for you guys to read and go through. And the point that we're at now is to seek any advice or input or thoughts on the document for, from the board and also the community. Last but not least, this presentation is for informational purposes only and as part of the outreach and engagement efforts by Tilson Technology on the draft strategic plan. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Shelley and I will advance slides as you'd like me to.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Yes, and so as already mentioned, I would like to also recognize our partners in this effort. The U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration, which provided the grant funding, and the Golden State Finance Authority, which served as the contract manager and grant administrator for the project on behalf of its member counties. The Golden State Finance Authority engaged Tilson Technology for the broadband planning and feasibility studies for the purpose of researching the telecommunications landscape in the county. And we looked at a number of things, including the locations of existing fiber optic cable and other assets, service locations and service offerings of internet service providers in the county, the locations of premises lacking, adequate broadband service, and available funding for broadband infrastructure. Go ahead and advance the slide. The purpose of today's conversation, and I'm going to read this because I think it's important, is to introduce you to a single document that includes everything local government may need to know to be an active participant in broadband planning and deployment in your county. And I think this is really important because we, I think everyone who invests in the idea of broadband wants active participation from local government. Next slide, please. During today's conversation, we're going to cover a couple of issues. I think we have one slide that maybe didn't make it in there. And that's outreach and engagement process, study outline, highlights, and next steps. I do want to call out the efforts that Tilson Technology undertook to get feedback from targeted specific groups. And we did reach out to businesses, internet service providers, and community anchor institutions with surveys. That was done back in June via email. And the analysis of the responses is in the document. And so I would call your attention to those because that is also important feedback. Next slide, please. And next slide. Thank you. I'm going to call attention to the sections in the document. It's a rather large document. We covered a lot of territory in the study. And I think that as you move through it, it'll introduce some new terminology, some new technology. And so Tilson Technology was very strategic about how they, how we created the document so that it could be used by people with all levels of comfort with broadband. So we started with the executive summary, which is a really good resource tool to start reading this document because, again, it is a heavy document. And the executive summary breaks down by section descriptions and information that you can find in each section and helps guide you through the process of reading and understanding the document in its entirety. Section two introduces essential concepts and details about broadband that are necessary to understand the deployment and funding landscape. Section three, current and future needs assessment, really looks closely at the digital divide in the county and identifies the portions of households that remain unand underserved and explores factors that shape the adoption challenges in the county. And it also reviews broadband needs of businesses, community anchored institutions, and tribal communities within the county. Section four identifies service areas of internet service providers that are currently offering broadband services. It uses maps and available information to develop an understanding of where broadband services with different performance characteristics currently are, and more importantly, where they're not available. Section five describes the current middle mile infrastructure for a better understanding of backfall capability of internet service providers. Section six is the broadband funding strategies. And I know this is really important to most folks, so we'll have another slide on that. But this is very detailed section on the opportunities for broadband funding, both at the state level and the federal level. And section seven really expands and examines the policies and strategies that can reduce deployment costs, including permitting, asset access policies, and local coordination. Number eight, the section eight expands the analysis of digital inclusion considerations and strategies. And number nine talks about smart communities. And finally, number 10, section 10, really discusses recommendations and future next steps. Next slide, please. This slide is a quick overview of the funding, available funding for broadband deployment. And I won't go into it too much because this is a big topic and it needs a lot, a lot more time and consideration than we have a wanted. But I just wanted to provide you with kind of an overview of some of the opportunities that currently exist. And then, of course, hopefully, at some point in the future, we'll have additional federal opportunities. Next slide, please. One thing that we feel is really interesting is the concept of smart communities. And this, this really takes shape as broadband is deploying in the county. And it gives counties and local government the opportunity to really engage with their residents to determine the county's next priorities. So smart communities are digitally leveraged innovative technologies, analytics, and data that find new ways to solve countywide challenges and improve the quality of life for residents. And again, they're co-created, people-focused, and community-driven concepts. And they can range anywhere from smart utilities, smart transportation, traffic light and traffic management. They run the gamut and it's really something that you can work on with your residents and offers a lot of opportunity for you. We think it's pretty exciting. So next slide, please. So the next step, as was already mentioned, is that we have submitted and provided you a draft study. And we are getting your comments, your questions, your concerns, and those will be incorporated into the study. And a final document will be delivered to you the first quarter of 2024. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any.
Any questions from the board? Kathy, you have anything you want to add?
I do not at this time. I don't know if Stan or Barbara has anything they'd like to add.
Stan does. There he goes.
Good morning. Barbara, I think Stan wants to talk and then I see Barbara raised her hand. Stan?
Yeah, good morning. Thanks for the presentation. I was, I was just going to take the opportunity to ask Barbara if, if we could ask her to chime in from the, from the ICIC and Golden State perspective on how, on how this plan will help us along.
Barbara?
Thank you, everyone. Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Barbara Hayes, Chief Economic Development Officer, RCRC. And I just wanted to highlight the great contribution of funding for this project. And I just wanted, Shelley's presentation kind of was meant to provide an introduction to this hefty document as it's known in draft form and for current form. I wanted to go back even further before the document was, the work in the document was starting and give you a little bit of context around the thought behind the work that was funding for this project was. In July 2021, the governor signed after the legislature unanimously passed SB 156. This was, of course, a long piece of legislation that, you know, provided historical purpose of funding for broadband deployment. But as importantly as all, it, for the very first time, it was created in fact to the opportunity for county to operate, maintain, be involved in broadband infrastructure, to have a seat at the table. So following the signing of that documentation, or I'm sorry, registration, in September, two months hit, we wrote and submitted a grant to EDA for the development of these, these studies, these documents that were meant to serve as a companion of information. That if you as elected leaders or staff leaders within the county were to pick them up, there'd be, there were two sorts of information for everything from definitions, that the language associated around broadband, all the way to where the existing infrastructure is located within the county. We wrote that it's a movement in time relative to the infrastructure piece that's on the document, thought we needed to have it started with smart. So that was the genesis behind the EDA grant. EDA was very excited, the administration was very excited about funding such a grant. And we were, I would say, finding the authority, just an RCRC affiliate, very happy to be able to play the role that we played in writing, submitting, securing, administering, and managing this grant. Sounds like a lot, you know, I think about it. We're very happy to have played the role that resulted in this resource being available for you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? It's informational only. But since I forgot the public comment on the last item as I'm warming up to this job, I'll do it on this one. Very well, Barbara, thank you so much. And Shelley, thank you so much for your work on all this. If there's no further comment, then we'll consider this item closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the item number 14, which is authorize the board chair to sign the attached letter per request to the Calaveras County Resource Conservation District and their partners in support of the project entitled San Andreas East Fuel Break. Mike, is this your item?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Mr. Chair, you're Mr. Chair. I think I'll have to amend that letter, though, to reflect the change in leadership. So, thank you. Yeah, this letter was a request of CCRCD through OES for the board to support the 160-acre fuel break that will be to the east of us here, protecting San Andreas and much of the government center and the, and the large buildings here. So we also have, the Sierra Nature Conservancy is also supportive of this. And we also have Kaylee Dillashaw on as well, if she'd like to speak. So we are in support of this and we ask for your, your, your support as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Dillashaw, would you like to add anything?
All right. Sure, just that note that this fuel break is protecting KCU headquarters as well as the only hospital in Calaveras County, in addition to many homes and other businesses.
Thank you. Supervisor Stopper? No?
Just a public comment.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any comments from the board? Siri?
No.
Madam Clerk, online?
There are no online public comments.
Okay, we didn't have this last time I was chair. Ben?
You know, if it's all right with you all, I'd like to make a motion with the amended, suggested amended part to it, to move this letter forward, if you're all right with that, Karen.
We have a motion by Supervisor Stopper, a second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. Mike, thank you very much. And I attended the meeting last night in Mokel Field Break. These are all great projects for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 15. Introduce an ordinance repealing the portion of ordinance 2251, codified in county code section 2.64.7575, county alcohol drug abuse policy. Way first reading and authorized summary publication. Judy?
Good morning, Chair Germiny, members of the board, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. And we are requesting that we pull our drug and alcohol policy out of the 2.64 personnel policy, or, sorry, our personnel code. So it allows us to be able to make updates to the policy more timely. It's a little bit easier. It will still be brought before the board for adoption by resolution. Our current policy has been in our ordinance since 1992, although it meets the requirements under the Drug Free Workplace Act of 1990 for the state and 1988 for federal. We still feel that there needs to be more clarification and also definitions. And then now the state has passed AB 2188. With AB 2188, we do have to have within our policy that we will not discriminate against off-duty cannabis use. Now, I do want to clarify, this is for non-DOT, this policy is our non-DOT policy. We do have a separate policy that meets the requirements under the federal DOT laws. And so we do need to make sure that we update the policy accordingly. And also within the new policy, we're putting more clarification regarding reasonable suspicion testing, when and how that may occur. Also, the fact that our managers and supervisors have to be properly trained to be able to do reasonable suspicion testing. So our first step is to pull this policy out of our ordinance and then bring back the new policy to you by resolution.
Thank you. Questions on the board?
Yeah, I had a conversation with Sarah yesterday about this item. And I want to ask another question, has, do, this policy is within an ordinance?
Has this policy is within an ordinance that was adopted? Now, we're pulling the policy out and we're not making it an ordinance, we're just making it a policy. Is there any difference between what we're doing within an ordinance and just making it a policy?
No, not substantively. It's just a procedural change. As Ms. Hawkins mentioned, this will make it a little less cumbersome for when the board, if and when the board needs to amend the policy in the future. It can just be done via resolution. But it'll still be a board-adopted policy and it'll be just as weighty regardless of not being in ordinance.
So, the main thing is, it being a policy itself, we make changes to it. It doesn't go like an ordinance where it has to wait 30 days.
Correct.
We'd be able to hold it.
Which is correct, which is quite frankly more typical. I think it's safe to say it's fairly atypical to have something that pertains to employees in the workplace like this in ordinance, as opposed to just being a board-adopted policy. The reasons for those sort of procedural things you talk about with an ordinance waiting to take effect is so the public can do a referendum if they needed to. Those sort of things don't tend to apply to employee policies. So, I think this is a better procedural way of handling it.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Hubbard?
I just had a quick question stupidly. What happens in the interim? When we repeal this, then?
That's a really good question. So, because we are repealing an ordinance, you can only do that via ordinance. So, this is the first reading of the ordinance repealing that section. Then it'll have to come back to the board for a second reading and then it will become effective 30 days after that. So, this will still be in place for a while. During that period of time I just articulated, Ms. Hawkins will be bringing the new policy to the board for adoption.
So, we're not going to have a?
We won't have a gap, yeah. There should not be a gap. Yeah, there'll be no free-for-all. And I have met and confer with the unions. SCNIU worked very closely on the new policy and so that process has already been completed. And so, I am ready to bring the new policy forward.
And they're on board?
Yes.
All of our labor unions? Public comment? This is an action item. Any public comment on this item? Anybody online?
There are no online public comments.
Very well, bring it back to the board. Is there a motion?
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli is her second? Second? Second by Supervisor Stoppa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 16, receive an informational presentation from the University of California Cooperative Extension. Do we need a, is Mr. Anneto around? Very well, we will table that and if he just shows up, then we'll have his presentation afterwards. If not, I'll just take a rain check and withhold his rent. Very well. Jesse, do you need a second to set up? Why don't we take a five-minute break and we'll get things set up? So, we'll be back here in five minutes. So, that's Chair 17. Thank you. All right, welcome back to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. We are on item number 17, which is to receive an informational presentation from the Department of Ag Culture, Weights and Measures. Jesse?
Lighting up. Wait, wait. Hello? Can you hear me? Yeah. Yeah, okay, good, okay. So, good morning, Chair Garamendi and honorable members of the board. I am Jesse Fowler. I'm the Agriculture Commissioner, Director of Weights and Measures and I've brought my deputy, Carrie Bassett, with me today. Good morning. Before I start, I did want to just comment on the earlier, the ag pass, just to reassure you guys that our department will be there for all three presentations to answer any questions there might be. So, today, I'm here to basically just give an overview of, the next one, give an overview of our department, basically what programs we offer and also the budgeting that's associated with that as requested. I broke this down into three parts. The first is going to be an overview of who we are. The second is going to be of our programs. The third is going to be of funding. There are 55 slides on here and they are quite informational dense. I'm going to be just summarizing a lot of this just to make sure that we do make it the half an hour because I know over that, a lot of people tend to fall asleep. And again, a lot of this information is just going to be for your reference if you want to go back to later or for questions. So, if you want to go ahead and, thank you. So, first of all, agricultural commissioners. This system is actually unique to California. In the United States, there are agricultural commissioners, but they are at a state level and they're elected. In California, every single county has an agricultural commissioner that is associated with it. And this system actually started in 1881, but at that time, we were called Horticultural Commissioners. In 1950, they actually added in the sealers of weights and measures, so that side of it. We do actually have an Agricultural Commissioners Association. They're currently called, it's a mouthful, California Agricultural Commissioners and Sealers Association, which we just call CACASA because it's a whole lot shorter. And just for comparison, first pesticide law in California was passed in 1901. California Department of Food and Agriculture, which was then called California Department of Agriculture, was created in 1919. And then even California Department of Food or California Department of Pesticide Regulation was capped off of CDFA in 1991. So, the agricultural commissioners actually predate many regulations and actual state agencies. Here is a really cool picture that I stole from another agricultural commissioner. That is the originals, right there. There's the OG Horticultural Commissioners. And, do you want to go ahead and go next? And here we are today. So, this was actually taken at our Fall Conference. We have a Spring and Fall Conference. The CACASA Fall Conference here is actually put together by the Secretary of California Food and Agriculture and the Director of Pesticide Regulation. There are some of their staff in that audience, but it's mostly us. And just to let you know, the baby is not the youngest agricultural commissioner, but is instead the son of the woman who's holding him and that is CACASA's executive director.
He's way in the back.
Yeah, that's what, I call that the introvert section. So, that's, yeah, where we all hide and kind of stick our face around somebody else. All right, so, the California system. So, CACASA is comprised of five area groups and we're in the Sacramento Valley Group. We meet in our area group level monthly and then we meet regionally and then, as I said, on a state level discuss items of interest. CACASA has a Board of Directors, which is actually elected by their members on an annual basis. And I'm actually really pleased to say that I am nominated this year to serve as secretary on that Board of Directors, which is a huge honor considering I've only been a commissioner a little bit over three years. Go to the next. So, this is an overview to show the communication from the federal level down to the county level. We partner with all those agencies listed to perform federal and state programs on a local level. And this allows for a better understanding of local needs and allows our department to best serve our community. And surprised, we're a regulatory agency, so we have a lot of regulations. These are the three main ones that we go by. And, so that's, I did put some really fun regulatory code in here, but a lot of this is just kind of, again, explain where we're coming from so people understand why we have these programs. So, again, this one says, you know, you need to have an ag commissioner in every county, that the ag department is under the control of the ag commissioner and that the ag commissioner is appointed by you, the board. We are appointed for a period of four years, after which I will need to be reappointed for another four years. Before you ask, my reappointment will be this November, so I am hoping to be reappointed at that time. And then the bottom also lets you know about qualifications, so why am I particularly in this position? And that's because I have a state license from California Department of Food and Agriculture for both being a commissioner and a sealer. And then I'm going to go over next just the hierarchy, now that you kind of know how I got here. So, we're one of five departments under the umbrella Environmental Management Agency and more specifically, thank you. This is the actual hierarchy, so starting with the department head, who is Lisa as my administrator, and then moving on to me. And then I did want to also note on here that, I know that she is listening. We have, Tommy Darnell is our newest employee. She's the new administrative, maybe, if I can say the word, Administrative Services Officer. It's kind of a mouthful. And she actually just started last week, so I just wanted to take a moment to welcome her aboard. And then below that, we have Carrie as the deputy and we have our boots-on-the-ground field staff. And I'd also like to take a moment here because, again, we wouldn't be a department without them. So, I'd just like to thank them for their tremendous work and also their knowledge because they really are an asset to the county. And then as far as some of my contributions beyond just my department, you can see how far and how much we have to go there. So, basically, I'm an ex-officio member and/or a liaison on the Agriculture Advisory Committee, the Fish and Game Commission, Hardwood Advisory Committee, and then, you got it, thanks. And then I am a liaison and/or county of point of contact for the Calaveras County Calumens Association, Calaveras County Farm Bureau, Calaveras County Resource Conservation District, Calaveras Wine Grape Alliance. And then programs. So, there are our beautiful programs. We have 15 programs. And the black programs are the ones that are mandated and they're actually found in every single county's agricultural department. The teal ones are not mandated and only found in some county agricultural departments, like here in Calaveras. And then I'm going to go through an overview page. So, starting out, pest prevention is actually made up of four different programs, which is pest exclusion, pest detection and pest eradication and management. Pest prevention starts at our borders. This is just a really cool graphic that I found that shows how many border stations and port inspection stations we have here in California. Each is looking for non-native invasive plant and animal species as well as plant pathogens. And we do the same here in Calaveras. So, here is one of our former biologist inspectors checking a box of backyard fruit that he intercepted during one of our regular inspections at a package distribution center. I've included some of the contract funding that we do receive where it is applicable in the program, in the program slides and I'll have a summary at the end too. And here we have this contract, which is specifically for inspecting incoming shipments for agricultural products. It's called a high-risk contract. And then below are the numbers of inspections we performed over the course of the year, which were also reflected in the crop report. Thank you. And so, we set traps as part of our pest detection program and we do those for Mediterranean fruit fly, oriental fruit fly, melon fruit fly, Japanese beetle, spongy moth and glass-winged sharpshooter. We also do visual surveys for other species of concern, but those are the ones that we actually have traps for. And we do this in order to protect our local ag industry and our department does hire seasonal ag techs to go out and place and service these four different types of traps. And what we're doing is we're placing them around the county and they are designed to specifically attract those species I mentioned. And then all those species are not established in California and we want to keep it that way because they are interest to agriculture, landscaping and actual native plants. The three traps that are pictured, the fourth one looks pretty much like that, the green one on the far right, but white. And I just want to put those up there so that residents kind of, if they see that hanging around, that's what it is. So, why set the traps? This one kind of gives you an idea of the kind of economic loss that we could see. So, you can see that that is billions of dollars. And I did put two species up here, so this is just to show the kind of specific knowledge that our staff is trained to use in the field to determine if we have a pest find that should be sent to CDFAs, their entomologists, for an official identification. On the left is Japanese beetle versus a green june beetle. We need to know the difference. So, this one's kind of obvious because obviously that one guy is way bigger than the other one. But the other side, I put the oriental fruit fly. That's just a male and female. They're both oriental fruit flies. But I specifically put this one because fruit flies are a little harder to tell apart. Usually, it's just like wing patterns, slight color differences, very slight differences in size. But also that oriental fruit fly, we've had a really, as I've come before the board before, we've had a really bad year when it comes to invasives in California and specifically the oriental fruit fly. So, in a normal year, we see less than 100 of these insects trapped. And again, a lot of this is from packing a pest. So, this year, well, this year, 2023, since we are in 2024 now, over 1,000. So, that's 10 times, 10 times what we normally see, which is just absolutely unprecedented and I just wanted to kind of drive that home.
A mistake on identification because they do look like a lot of our wasps.
Yes, well, they're much smaller, but the coloring, especially with the yellow and the black, yes. All right, so pest detection is important enough that we actually have multiple contracts for those specific pests and insects. And up here, I did put fiscal year 22, 23, just because that particular one, they are notorious for getting that to us late. I got it in the interim between when I actually submitted this, and it's pretty much the same, except it's $2 more. And so anyway, it's the glass-winged sharpshooter contract is a state contract, whereas our exotic fruit fly, Japanese beetle, and spongy moth contracts are federal USDA that are passed through the state. And then at the bottom, you see how many traps were placed and how many times they were serviced. And those numbers are actually guided by those contract parameters. And then on the bottom right, I did include, because I'm here for informational on everything. So we're looking out for this guy, that's called a spotted lanternfly. It's really beautiful. It actually looks like a moth, and it's a decent size too. But it's the newest one that could be really detrimental, not only to ornamental plants, but to the wine grape industry up here. And this guy is actually on the West Coast, and he is pushing his way westward, especially following a lot of routes like highways, train tracks, that sort of a thing. They originated from Asia, but again, it's just one more thing that we keep an eye out for when we're going out and we're doing inspections of material coming in from out of the county. All right, so apiary, also known as beehives. So we perform inspections on commercial hives coming into Calaveras to make sure that they don't have any detrimental pests or diseases that they could bring in and spread to other commercial colonies or even hobbyist colonies. We also register all of the commercial hives that come in, and that way we have contact information and as well as locations so that we can alert them if there's going to be any agricultural pesticide applications within a mile that might negatively affect their bees. But also so that we can follow up on complaints because we are the ones that receive the complaints from residents when like bees are swarming their pools or other water feed sources, and we do have ordinance related to that as well. Thank you, all right, so the next is pest management. So our work in this program is mostly with non-native invasive weed eradication and management. We get monies from CDFA, basically go out to find them, to GPS them, and then either to just remove or treat them. And these species that we look for, there's actually a list that CDFA puts out, and they're rated according to how invasive and how widespread they are. Those are just some of the ones we do have in the county. I've used these photos before, but spotted knackweed, tall white top, and diffuse thistle. And what we do is when we receive the money, one of the reasons we receive, it's a pretty good contract, as you can see, two years for over $41,000, is because we have that bottom bullet, is CSPAS and Central Sierra Partnership Against Weeds. It's something that we do, we have quarterly meetings alongside Tuolumne County. We partner with them, but also we partner with state and federal agencies and local homeowners and businesses. Pretty much anyone can be a part of this group. And their whole purpose is basically to educate the community on these weeds so that they can be discovered and removed before they become pervasive. I always like to use yellow star thistle because everybody knows what that is, and it's everywhere. So we don't want that to happen with these weeds. All right, so then we have nursery regulation. So this one, we inspect all commercially grown nursery stock, which is plants, to make sure that the material grown in the county has a level of cleanliness and health. We do receive a small amount from CDFA for inspection, but we only have a couple nurseries, so it's not a large sum. And then food quality, so this is a lot of smaller programs. Basically, we do inspections of certified producers, farmers markets, organic commodity production, egg handler outreach, and then also commercial egg standards at the point of sale. So all those egg cartons need to have certain information on them and have a certain level of cleanliness. Then also correct produce packaging, it's part of our standardization program, as we also have seed packaging and fruit standardization for certain commodities. So again, like in order to sell an apple commercially, it has to be a certain size, color, ripeness, certain bricks, sugar level, all that before it can actually be released. All right, so direct marketing. It's another way we just celebrate our local food production is through our certified farmers markets. Ag producers, they're all located within that certified section of these farmers markets, and they are actually certified in their origin county ag department. So even if you go to a farmer's market and say one of our certified producers goes to another county, whoever purchases knows that we went out to that site and we made sure that they actually grew what they are selling. And we do receive some reimbursement, and it's through a CDFA contract. And up here, I do have some stats. Again, these are also found in the crop report. And we're also for complaints for roadside vendors when they're selling who knows what on the side of the road that's ag-related. Thank you. And then, as I mentioned, we ensure what is marketed is what you get, so truth in advertising. We do have a contract with CDFA to check organic production sites and another to check incoming commercial seed for germination dates, cleanliness, that sort of thing. And here is that crop report. And so this is actually, yeah, you've seen that guide, and it is part of our crop statistics program. This is also covers, it's required, the crop report's part of the Food and Ag Code, it's mandated. And crop statistics also covers surveying local producers whenever we have some kind of weather event, be it like our last New Year's Eve or the one we actually did the last disaster declaration for, which was the April 2022 freeze. All right, this is the big one that you're going to be happy I'm summarizing because this is our largest program. So I really tried to bullet this down as to overview, because I could honestly probably talk about this program by itself for an hour or two. This is just kind of some of the subprograms. And I just wanted it to show basically, it's not just ag. So any commercial use of pesticides, we regulate. And not only that, we also investigate any pesticide-related incidents. So even if you have like somebody, that's your neighbor sprays like Roundup, and it drifts over onto your property and like kills some of your grass kind of a thing, that's us. So we go out and we investigate every single complaint. And it's not only things like drift, but it's things that a lot of people aren't even aware of, like doctor's first reports, which is basically whenever somebody seeks medical attention for a possible pesticide exposure, that doctor is actually mandated to put that into a system that then kicks it down to the county level, and we have to do an inspection to see what happened. Because not only for safety of the persons involved, but also to see if maybe they need to do a label change to make people safer. Most exposures and associated doctor visits are actually for antimicrobials. A lot of people don't understand that the term pesticide is actually an umbrella term. That's any kind of side, be it an herbicide, an insecticide, or a fungicide, or in this case, antimicrobials, like bleach. So that is actually, if you're using it to get rid of the mildew around your tub, you're actually using it in pesticide use, and that's something that we, excuse me, we regulate. So that's why when we work in this program, our most important interaction is actually outreach and education. Because there are so many facets, I'm not even going to go into like for if you have employees and the training, oh my goodness. Anyway, so next. All right, so funding sources are as complex as this program and fortunately as robust. We receive a little over $100,000 in reimbursement monies through the mill tax and unclaimed gas tax, which I'm going to go into a little bit more detail later. But altogether, 50% of this program's costs were reimbursed in the last fiscal year, so that's pretty good. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the incredible work of our inspector staff. They were quietly behind the scenes, performing a very important role. Consumers and businesses alike, they share a confidence in the marketplace with the knowledge that the scales used to weigh our produce and the meters used to dispense our vehicle fuel are accurate. Our standards inspectors protect everyone, including ag industry, from negligent and fraudulent activities. And again, this is our second-largest program, as you can see by the many subprograms up here, and Carrie pointed out that we actually forgot one. I'm not going to go into all of them because again, we only have a half an hour. Basically, anything that's weighed or measured for commercial sale, be it a yard of dirt, a quart of wood, a pound of apples, 200 pencils in a box, or as I was explaining outside, even the headspace in a jar of mayonnaise, that is all us. It falls underneath our weights and measures program, and on the case of devices, we check those on an annual basis. All right, funding of weights and measures, unlike the other programs I've covered so far, the majority is actually through fee and penalty base. We do receive a very small amount through CDFA contracts, as I've listed up there. And also, we do have MOEs with both Tuolumne and Amador County for when they do use our weight truck for their larger capacity scales. But altogether, with fees, the reimbursement is 37% of program costs. There was actually a recent change in regulations that allows for a little bit of a fee increase, and I'm actually going to, I'll be back, so you'll see me again to talk about that. All right, so other programs, we have these, these are the two other large programs that we have. So we have the Wildlife Trapper, which we have a contract for, and then also the Williamson Act Program. That's not solely our department, though, we do share that work with both planning and the assessors departments. All right, so I was specifically asked about cannabis in our county during my last presentation. I've outlined just kind of what we do as far as the cannabis program, as well as what we have regulatory oversight on. The oversight, I realized wasn't really included on there, is also, like I said, the pesticide use, any kind of complaints that have to do with cannabis that are pesticide-related, that goes to us. At the very bottom, you do see, we do receive a quarterly amount from Department of Pesticide Regulation for activities specifically performed in this program. And then as far as cannabis economic impacts, I did try to look, I couldn't really find anything specific to Calaveras. I spoke to Doug Oliver, and he said that he's pretty much presented everything that he already has, so. All right, now we're going to get into the third final part, which is funding. All right, I'm going to say upfront, our general fund draw for this fiscal year is projected to be about $460,000. It's not a small amount, and I know that we are a small department. So ag departments are kind of notorious for being fairly expensive considering our size, especially in smaller counties, larger counties obviously, especially the Central Valley, they're a huge department. But a lot of that is because we have specialty staffing and a lot more than similarly sized departments might. However, you see how many programs we have and why we need specialized staffing. And the most important thing, which I'm now going to get into, is actually our subvention and then those contract amounts. Because between the two of those, we're reimbursed approximately 40 cents on every single dollar that the county spends. And then I do want to note, which I've kind of drawn out there at the bottom, that of all the expenses in our budget, so the Federal Wildlife Trapper, who was great, I mean, we had that press release recently, that contract equates to 19% of that general fund draw. And that also is now, our fleet has gotten to the point, our trucks have gotten to the point that we need to start replacing them due to safety issues and the fact that they're almost as old as some of our staff. And of course, our largest budget expense is going to be staffing at 72% of that total budget. And that is a large number, and why, it's because they're really highly specialized through training, education, and certification in order to move seamlessly between those 15 programs. And then I have how specialized they actually are. So just to qualify, at the bottom, so our entry level would be the, what we call an ag tech. And that position, you need to have at least a diploma or equivalent from high school. Then from there, when you move up into our actual ag biologist position, and that's the position where you would, when you do an inspection, you can actually sign off on that inspection. Just to be hired, you need to have a college bachelor's degree in a science field related to what we do. To be retained, so within that first year, they actually need to get at least one state license from the California Department of Food and Agriculture. And then to advance, because there's a one, two, and three series, they would need to get up to eight state licenses, and those licenses are related to the programs that we run. I reached out to CDFA for actual numbers of people that are holding at least one state license. So the entire state has approximately 1,150 people that would qualify for our ag biologist position. Then you move up into Carrie's position, to a deputy position. This county only requires to have one state license, which again is through CDFA. And that one's really fun because it's a three-part license. So you have to do a written portion, an essay portion, and an oral portion in front of a panel for that one in order to get that license. And then in order to advance, you'd have to get two. So there's one for the ag commissioner, one for the stealer. And then to become a commissioner like myself, you would need to obviously have those. And the commissioner series, which is the same thing all over again, the three-part. So the deputy level, 275 people in the entire state that would qualify for Carrie's position. For mine, there is 125 people that would currently qualify for my position in the entire state. All right, subvention funding, so there's two things that we get. We get unclaimed gas tax and mill tax. Unclaimed gas tax is pretty much what it sounds like. It is a tax, when you go to the pump and you buy a gallon of gas, there's a lot of taxes, everybody loves them. Some of those go into a fund that is to maintain the roads that we all drive on. So if somebody goes there though, and they're buying a gallon of gas, say for like their ATV, that's not going to go on the road. So that goes into a large pot of money. And at the end of the year, people can go and get whatever monies that they get for reimbursement. And whatever monies are left over, that money gets distributed to state departments like DOT, but it also comes down to us at the county level. And this is all broken out, and I'll go into it in a minute. But the monies are basically based on how much time that we spend in certain programs. So if you want to go next. Our friend, Food and Ag Code. So this is all outlined in Food and Ag Code 224. That's subsection G, there's a whole lot of other subsections that go with it. But basically, what this is, is outlines what we need to do, which is turn in an annual financial statement. And then she'll go to the next one. And if we do so, then we are allocated up to one-third of the program costs, and that is actually what we do get. We get a third of the program's cost reimbursed to us for these 10 different programs. You'll see waste and measures isn't on there, and neither is pesticide use enforcement, but I did put it in a little box. Food and Ag Code 224 allocates a separate amount specifically for the pesticide use enforcement activities. And then also, on the other one, was the mill tax. That is also specifically for a pesticide use enforcement program. And that is a tax that is assessed when a pesticide is first sold in California. And again, goes into a pot and is distributed, mattering how much enforcement activities that we do. Obviously, we're smaller, we don't do as much, we don't get as much as the larger counties. So this kind of breaks down, so that annual financial statement above the line programs versus below. Again, this is just basically showing the 10 that we do get reimbursements through the either mill or unclaimed gas tax, and then the kind of teal ones that we do not. So the subvention monies, so this is, they're usually, they're a year in the rear. We actually just got the letter, again, between when I submitted this and I'm presenting it to you today. And we are going to get 250, well, this one is last fiscal year, is $256,000 and change. This year, I'm really excited because we're going to get an additional $35,000 just because we have been really trying to get a lot of work done. And also, again, it also matters how much people drive with their gas engines and how much money is in that one fund. Because again, like I said, they break it down evenly between the counties as far as work performed. So they have, mattering if they have whatever, a million versus 150 million, that'll be distributed, you know, if you worked 3%, you worked 5%, you know, it's divided up. And then in order to receive those monies, then we go to the maintenance of effort. This is the requirements, I'm obviously not going to read it because that's a lot of words. But this, again, in the Food and Ag Code section, this is 224.5. It talks about what we need to do, I'm going to kind of summarize it in the next. So this is our annual financial statement that we sent in, we just sent this one in. It's due by the first of November. Ours, it shows, it goes back, way back in time, so it goes back 20 years, but the only thing that's actually pertinent is the last five years, which is below that green bar because that's what the state actually looks at. So what they want to see is if the county is basically maintaining their own effort to fund our program, and they look at the last five years, they average it, and then they compare this most recent fiscal year that ended to that number, if it is the same amount or more, then we met our MOE and we receive the unclaimed gas tax funding. If we do not, well, then I get to write a letter on behalf of CEO Hitchcock, which is fun, because you really have to detail out why we didn't meet the MOE. And they're really picky, it can't just be like, oh, we have a higher and freeze. And then also how we are going, the county is going to meet that MOE moving forward. That letter then goes to a panel that reviews it, and they either approve it, in which case we will have our unclaimed gas tax funds released and mill monies released to our county, or they will not, and then we do not get those monies. And the happy, happy thing though is, is the big question, did we meet it this last year? The red arrows, why, yes, yes, we did, I'm very happy with that. Part of the reason is actually because we are, for the first time in several years, fully staffed. Yeah, that's for you guys, if you want to really dig into it later. All right, so contracts, agreements, and grants. So this, again, I didn't have pest detection up there because we hadn't received it at the time, so that should be $38,862 more. And again, that noxious weed contract is two years, so you could subtract 20 and a half thousand if you like. But that is just to give you an overview of how much that we are receiving in addition to the unclaimed gas tax and the mill tax. So altogether, for fiscal year 22, or excuse me, 23, 24, between those three sources, we're going to get 398,000 plus, so almost $400,000 back, which is more than last fiscal year. And this is just to kind of show you as far as just the contract amounts. So recently, there's been more money available at both federal and state level, and you can see that up sweep. The issue here is that we have not been able to fully invoice those contracts. If you'll actually go to the next one, that'll probably be a better one to show. So this one, and I just put the, because it's only partially built, I only put the 23, 24 on there just to keep it congruous with the other ones, it's the last five years. But as you can see, we basically, we've reached capacity in the amount of work that my staff can complete. Well, I only have two biologists. I have Carrie, who's doing only office work but trying to help out, which can, and then myself. We do have the tech, who's great for support work. And then we also have the extra hires too, which are also wonderful, anything that we can get always helps. But the issue becomes that we always prioritize tangibles, like issuing pesticide permits or going out and testing those device scales and other devices over, and things that are more flexible. So that would be like in the contract, going out and doing surveillance work for the non-native invasive weed species. Obviously, that's going to fall off the plate before somebody coming in and saying, I need something. That's always going to be our priority. And just to show you exactly what I mean, so this is our permits that are issued. So this is just for some of our multi-year, and these are just per year, how many people came in and said, I need to renew. As you can see, the last five years, that's gone up substantially. And then again, with devices, so again, those are our two largest programs, that's why I put those in there. So this one too, also going up quite a bit. And the other part of this, just to keep in mind, so electric vehicle chargers, a lot of people are going to electric vehicles, they need a charger. Those are a device, that is something that we actually have to go out and annually test. So this number is going to go up even more in future years. So which brings me to future budgetary items. So as you can see, I would really love to have an additional licensed staff. And that's just basically so we can dedicate more time to these programs, invoice contracts at the maximum amount. And then also to continue to provide excellent level of service and resources to our community. Like I mentioned before, we've got two more vehicles that we're going to need to replace, obviously not all at once, but just something to be aware of. We're going to be asking for a little bit extra just to get those guys out. And then photo of my fantastic staff means that we have reached the very last slide. And I wanted to basically thank you guys though for hanging in there with me and listening to me ramble on for half an hour through many, many slides, and then questions?
Thank you very much, Jesse.
Yeah.
The question's from the board, Raj Tofanoli.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
This is all county-wide, for county, city included in this, you go into the city? So it's not cities on their own, separate? As far as gas and measures and weights and pesticides? Are they included in this?
Oh, so no, so yes, we go in there, we do all those. So if they're within the city limits, if they have, if anybody has devices, yes, absolutely. It's, what's not is they do like their own sort of like roadside. They do kind of their own like pesticide application or polls for noxious weeds. We'll go in and we'll help out wherever necessary. But it's, it's, it's mostly, we kind of let them do what they need to do. But we do, as far as those mandated programs, yeah, we go in there. If there was like a drift incident, yes, we would go in there. If they have like beehives that somebody dropped that need to be checked, that coming in from that, yes. We absolutely go into the city.
Okay. And, and so the use of pesticides, I'm going back to the slide where you have pesticide ID permits issued.
Yes.
When you issue a permit and they come in and fill out the application, do they put the amount of pesticides that they're supposedly going to be using? So we have some type of regulation and know how much is being spread in the county?
So the way that it works is when they go in is there's two different kinds. There's an operator identification number, which is kind of people, it's, it's, it's part of a restricted materials permit. So you need to have this number in order to purchase any agricultural use materials in the state. And it, if you want to go the one step up above it, which would be the restricted materials permit, is you only, you'll need that, but you also need to basically list out what you want to use. And then you have to turn in a notice of intent, which is mattering on what you use. It's 24 to 48 hours before that application. Now, as far as knowing ahead of time what they're going to use, we do not. I mean, we can kind of guess what they're going to use just by like, if we have a vineyard that comes in, obviously there's materials that generally are used in a vineyard. And we know that. But what you're actually referring to is something that is a report that is actually put out by the Department of Pesticide Regulation. It's usually a few years behind the ball because as far as reporting goes, so if you were to come in and get an operator ID, let's say, and then you go out in your vineyard, you spray sulfur, whatever it might be, you have to the 10th of the month after that to actually turn that in.
Yeah, so you have to report.
You do have to report all usage.
All, okay.
All usage, so there.
So there is some regular, but it's a different level of state.
Yes.
Where you report what you bought and what you used.
Yes, absolutely. And there's, they're actually right now to, just to let you guys know, they are working on a, it's a beta program through Department of Pesticide Regulation. It's in Tulare County right now, where for the restricted, where they have a notice of intent and we, we have an idea of what's going to happen before it actually occurs. Because otherwise, it's just us going out and doing surveillance and, and seeing somebody spray. And then at what point we'll do an inspection. They have a program where they're, they're trying to post in one mile grids just for privacy purposes ahead of time, just to let people know. But that's, that's about as far as they've gone for ahead of, just because it's, it's pretty complex and it's, it's a difficult thing to do. So it mattering on pest pressures, the weather, equipment breaking down. And a lot of times growers need to, at the, you know, drop of a hat, you know, they have to change all, all of their plans, so.
All right, thank you.
Rajesh Tofanoli?
To follow, follow up on that, you also, any volatile type of chemicals, we do have to report anything over 50 gallons or a certain amount of weight when it comes to environmental health for any business or public entity in the county, correct?
I think that's under the, what's that called, the, oh goodness, I wish Feliso's here. So yeah, this is small quantity generator. There is a program, that's not under my department, but yes, they absolutely do.
Environmental health.
Yes.
So there, there is mandatory reporting when it comes to that also.
Yes, yes. California is very, very interested in what, what is being applied and used in the state. I will say that.
Thank you.
Had to go through you to get some.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, you, I remember you had to get something, an OP ID for something.
Yeah.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, if there's no other questions from the board. Jesse, how, how should the public interact with your department? And we know you've got your, your street, you're, you're on the public street. How should people interact with you? And at what level should they come in? I mean, we have many, we have our ag production, and then we've got a lot of things in between, between hobby and full-time job in this county. What, how should people be interacting with your office?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm, thank you for asking that, because that is actually a really good question. We are, we're actually, we have a lot of, of knowledge and programs that benefit just the average whoever. And you know, and that's, if, if, whether you're a business or a resident, I mean, we mostly, for people who just kind of, I would call like a cold call, just people kind of like reaching out and looking for information. A lot of it's actually pest identification or like weed identification. Otherwise, a lot of times it's like people who feel like they were shorted a little bit at a gas station. We get a lot of those kinds of complaints. We, we knock, I'm going to knock on wood somewhere for the, for bee complaints. So again, like I was talking about swarming, if, it's when it's really hot out, there's not enough water, those bees will swarm. And obviously, that's not ideal if you have like a pool and you can't even use it. Otherwise, you know, I would, I would strongly suggest if, if people are anything that they think, I, I went through some of our programs, anything related to those, if they have questions about the, the farmers markets, about pesticides, about pests of concern in the county. Again, anything weights and measures and my whole thing about the, the truth in advertising. So that even goes to advertise, advertising itself. So if there, if you go into a store and it actually says on the shelf and that something's supposed to cost like $5.99, they ring it up and it comes up $6.99, that is a truth in advertising. The store has to sell at that lowest price. So that's something that we can do an investigation on. Same thing, if, if you know, you go and you, you buy a pound of meat and you think you got shorted. And I will say right now, those diapers in there do count as tear. I'm sorry, I know it's mostly water, but that's the way the code's written. I, I would, I would strongly just encourage the, if the county residents are at all curious to call us and we'll see if we can help them.
Thank you. That was, that was my good softball. The next one is, you know, as, as public interacts with your agency, you know, I'm going to use commercial titles for some of these chemicals because I can't pronounce half of the stuff that's in there. So, you know, what I found out the other day when I went into, but when I went into the register for some garland to help Mastigation Project, I could also buy it online without registering or tractor supply. And how do you manage the flow of chemicals in this county when I don't have to go to you to get it?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. So what you brought up is actually, it's been a massive issue in the whole entire state. And it's something that the Department of Pesticide Regulation has been working with their own county council to try to figure out how some of these online, or even just traveling over to Nevada, friendly Nevada, and purchasing products that you can't get into California, how to circumvent that. Fortunately, a lot of large online retailers have started to ask, it's like, they say, oh, are you from California? Okay, where's your operator ID number? They, they need to have or restricted materials permit. But like you said, there, there are some issues with that. We are, we are continuously looking at a better way to manage what, what people can buy. Because as you said, you can still, it's kind of the Wild West out there. And you can still buy a lot of things you shouldn't, not just pesticides. But even like I was mentioning, the truth in advertising, another big thing with our Cacasa group is talking about, you know, there's a lot of stuff coming from out of the country. And it says that you're buying one thing and you get it. I'm sure this happened to all of us. And it's definitely not what it said it was going to be. So how do you go after that company? Because that's something that we do, truth in advertising. And how do you go after a company that's out of state, not under our regulations, or even out of the country? So that, again, it's, it is something that is, is, it's hotly debated and they're, they're actively working towards a solution for.
I was, I was surprised to find that when I went into your shop, that that was the case.
That, that brings up the question also too, not only buying it out of state or through the internet, the shipping of it. How, whether it's shipped correctly or not to protect.
Yeah.
During, yeah. That's another thing that needs to be discussed.
Also, if I could just add, you, you helped me with a couple of residents that were using products that were quite toxic. I think they were commercial grade on a residential property. And it was the smell that also was so different that the, the actual residents that lived locally were able to say, hey, what's going on here? And thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, that's what we're there for. I, I mean, we, I always say, we're a regulatory agency, but first and foremost, I like to think of us as education and outreach so that, you know, we can help the, the people in this county however and whenever we can.
Thank you. Next, or just a couple of comments.
Sure.
Certainly, I appreciate, I want to hear from the University of California next, taking on invasive species, especially in the plants. It's out of control. And any way we could do that, and I'll appreciate, I know that's in the next presentation. And also continuing to work on the Williamson Act. I hope that the two organizations can work together as we go through our greenhouse gas emissions program to actually quantify. We believe things like the Williamson Act and our general plan are, we should get credit for doing the right thing. And you would be the people who would be responsible for quantifying what those credits should be. So I appreciate your continued effort on that. And when you go through fee increases, I'd love to see Amador and Twalme pay for a little bit more of that truck before I'm out of office. I know that's just been a burden on my saddle, but.
But you know, to, to, we did actually, we, we did just recently in this last MOU, we substantially increased their, the amount per hour. Just because I, I went through and I, I broke it down. I'm like, okay, how much does this truck actually cost us? And that's basically, I'm like, we need to increase this a lot.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I was just going to ask if you could get a copy of the presentation.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm, do you want me just to email it to you?
Please, that would be great.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
And this is informational item, but we'll have public comment, Gina?
I just want to say thank you. Your presentation was outstanding. I learned so much about this. This is what, I'd like to get a copy of that too.
Okay.
Because I live on 20 acres and I have neighbors all around me on 20 acres doing things that I don't think are right. And the trapper, does the trapper make a lot of money? You don't have too much, but do they make enough money? Because I'm telling you, we have one dude, he's the best, Gary. He's a rock star. But I'm just kind of wondering, he drives around a lot and doesn't do a lot. Just kidding, he does a lot. But your education and knowledge is outstanding. I mean, this woman is just amazing. And you are just so much information, I don't know, your head should be like 25 pounds.
I, I didn't pay her, by the way.
No, I'm telling you, I learned so much about, your presentation was really, really good.
Thank you.
And, and my husband worked for the ag in Livermore and did the med fly for four years.
Okay.
And so he was an ag commissioner, whatever. And so he's retired now and can't work. But it's just amazing what you guys had to learn and what you guys have to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And I'll, I'll just, I'll post the, the actual presentation to our website. That way, anyone who wants to look at it. I was going to say, if any members, but yeah, it is attached to, if anybody pulls up today's agenda online on the county website and the board website, it's part of the agenda.
Hi, Elaine St. John, I know some of you, I'm from D4. And I wanted to know, what do you attribute the rise in pesticide use? What, what particular industry is using so much?
You know, it's.
Excuse me, what we're going to do in public comment is, we'll take all the comments.
Oh.
She could answer, we could, but what we do is start a conversation.
Yes, I forgot Matt, I just came back from Nevada, it was different there.
Well, we're here now, so.
And then my second question would be that the sheriff had been finding feed on some of the grows and I was wondering if that was still a problem.
Thank you very much. Other public comments? We'll circle back.
Okay, excellent.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, board. Great presentation. Congratulations on your chairmanship, sir. I would be very, I'm Sharon McKeon Harper, I'm District Two candidate. And I would be very interested to find out in the future what your employee retention rate is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other public comments? Anything online?
There are no online public comments.
Jesse, in closing comments, anything you want to respond to, or?
Um, no, again, I just, I, I guess I would, I would say, I feel like a lot of people don't realize we're there. And I would really, better or for worse, I would like them to know. Because again, we have a lot of resources and services that we can offer, not only the residents, but you know, the county as well, the different departments, so.
Thank you.
Give us a call.
And to our members of the public that have specific questions, I'm sure Jesse will be sticking around afterward and see if he can answer those or, Cheryl. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is University of California Extension. Do you need a couple of seconds to set up, Brian?
Just a couple of seconds.
It will take five minutes. All right, welcome back to the Board Supervisors Meeting. We are out of order, but we are going to move back to item number 16, which is the University of California Cooperative Extension, the presentation on current projects. Brian, welcome back to the board.
Yeah, it's Scott.
Sorry, Brian would be the supervisor for county. Sorry, Scott. Other side of the river, Matt.
Just need your mic on.
Okay, awesome. Well, good morning, board. And I apologize for being late. When I saw myself on the agenda towards the end, I was like, oh, I've got plenty of time to meet with a rancher this morning. And yeah, you guys get to business and get stuff done, so I appreciate that. But yeah, I apologize for being late and thank Jesse and Kerry for making changes to bump up in the agenda. So I wanted to just take this opportunity to showcase some of the projects that I've been working on the last couple of years as a researcher with the University of California. I'm sure many of you get our different outlets through either social media or our newsletters of some of the projects we're doing. But I thought this would be a great time just to highlight some of those projects. So without further ado, I'm going to just jump right in. And this might be maybe more of an overview for the general public that may be watching or listening in. But in terms of who we are, we're basically a network of university researchers. So I, I'm an employee of the University of California. And my job is to work locally in the communities that I serve to basically provide research-based information to my clientele. And as a farm advisor, I basically work with agriculturalists, so either animal agriculture or plant agriculture. And so we have folks like myself that are in county-based offices. So we basically have offices in every county in the state. We also have a network of research and extension centers. And those are basically, the University of California owns about nine different research centers across the state of California, where a lot of us researchers that are geographically located next to those will perform research. For myself, I'm fairly far from some of the local research and extension centers. The closest one proximity is in Brown's Valley, up in, by Grass Valley. So a lot of my research occurs on private property. Basically, I collaborate with a lot of agriculturalists, both ranchers and farmers, to do any of my research on their properties. And all of this is done, all of our work is done in collaboration with county government. So really, we wouldn't exist, we wouldn't be where we're at doing the things that we're doing without our county partners. So I want to just right up front, thank you all for your partnerships. I want to start with just highlighting some of the different projects that I've been working on. And I want to start with basically the livestock industry. Because as many of you know, and Jesse just did a wonderful job highlighting the different agricultural programs that her office is in charge of. One of them, of course, is the crop report. And if you read the crop report for the current, last year, you'll notice that livestock is actually the top or most valued agricultural commodity here in Calaveras County. And it's actually the top two, it's number one and number two. Beef production is number one, and then all other livestock falls in the, in number two category. So it's a really, really important commodity here in the county. And of course, much of that annual, or much of that livestock production occurs on annual rangelands. Do I, yeah.
Sorry, I did have it turned on, and then he flicked me. I just, what, what's the total on the cattle production?
Oh, number wise, oh.
Not, it doesn't have to be recent, because I know it's behind a little bit.
Yeah. Gosh, I want to say, wait, was it 18, something like that?
18 million?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's pretty close, yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember that number offhand, but yeah, I just know it's number one and number two, yeah. Yeah, I don't remember that number offhand, but yeah, I just know it's number one and number two, yeah.
I think the question is, where's cannabis?
Yes, right?
That would seem like it's.
Yeah.
Livestock's important.
Yeah.
One that's been here long.
Yeah. So, so again, all of this beef production and livestock production occurs on annual forage typically. And that annual forage production varies greatly. And so one of our projects, and this is probably one of the longest projects that I've been affiliated with, and it's going on its 28th year, is we go out and we monitor annual forage production across the landscape. That data then feeds into a statewide network that we then provide to the USDA Farm Service Agency so they can use that information for declaring whether or not that particular year is eligible for disaster assistance programs that ranchers might be qualified for. And so just on the map here, it shows the different locations of where I have set up plots to, to gather that data. I have three here in Calaveras County, and they basically look like this. So out on the landscape, at cooperating ranchers, we have these exposures that are set up. And within those exposures, we then go in at peak standing production, which means basically at the end of the growing season, when all of the forage has reached its maximum growth potential, we go out and we harvest that forage, we dry it, we then weigh it, and convert that number to pounds per acre. So for an individual site, the, the, this is basically historical since we started the project here back in 1995. Each of the colored lines here represents the different sites that I harvest, harvest forage from. And you can basically see there's up and down years, right? So annual, as I mentioned, annual forage production varies greatly from year to year. And this graph basically depicts that. So for any of the individual site, you'll see, you know, there's of course an average, but then there's peaks and valleys from year to year, showing that variation in forage production. The one thing that I will point out is you will notice that, for example, say, looking at, say, this 2004, 2005 year, usually if we see an increase or a decrease in a particular site, usually that corresponds across all sites. So although we can't say for a particular, like, part of the county, like, oh, you know, this ranch produces 3,000 pounds of forage, so, you know, the ranch down the street is going to also produce 3,000 pounds of forage. What we can say is that at a particular site where we harvested data, if it's up 30% and all of the other sites are up 30%, then we could confidently say that in general, annual rangeland across the region is also up 30%. So that's how that data is, is used by our partners. And so it goes into a report that I do annually, again, that I send to all of my collaborators, but also to local agencies like the Agricultural Department and to Farm Services Agency. This is just the chart from last year, showing in orange, the average for each individual site. So across the bottom are the different locations. And the blue bar represents the data for that current year. So you can see that, for the most part, this last year, we were below the long-term historical average across most locations. So, so that, this project's been working well for the last 28 years, but it's kind of old school. It's, we've been looking at how to use technology to perhaps make this even a more robust project for quite some time. And so about three years ago, we received a fairly large grant statewide to, to take this project to the next level in terms of using state-of-the-art satellites to determine whether or not we can use satellite imagery to quantify forage production real time. So that we're using a couple of different Sentinel satellites right now. They basically orbit about every four or five days. And by going out and taking measurements and then feeding it into models, we're trying to determine whether or not those models can accurately determine how much is for, how much forage is on the ground at an exact point in time, real time. And so we've been doing this for the last couple of years. This is just a couple of pictures of some of the sites that we have here. We have two sites here in Calaveras County. And so these are much, much larger exposures, a lot more intensive data collection, more intensive in terms of both time and effort. But we're just now finishing up this project. And so far, the, the data's looking really, really interesting in terms of its accuracy to be able to do that. So we're hoping that this data will feed into a decision support, basically an online tool that a rancher could then log into or pull up and say, okay, how is my, you know, pastures doing on the south side or the west side of the county compared to where I'm at here? And they can actually get real-time data saying, okay, it looks like there's about 3,000 pounds of forage in this pasture, or there's 5,000 pounds of forage. So they potentially could make some real-time changes in either management, or maybe, you know, they change their stocking densities, or maybe even incorporate some yearling cattle into their operation if it's a, just a really great year. The next project, also kind of on the livestock front, is a project that we're looking at called virtual fencing. And I put this little factoid at the bottom here, because I think it's kind of an interesting and one that I don't think people necessarily think about. But, you know, livestock fencing was the single most greatest expense in 19th century production agriculture. And it still actually remains one of the most important or most expensive aspects of livestock grazing today. So fencing is a very, very costly part of doing business for the livestock industry. And this particular project is looking at whether or not we could potentially augment physical fencing with what is called virtual fencing. And so some of the challenges, of course, here in California, is that we have very diverse landscapes. And even here in this county, they're very diverse. We have people that take their cattle all over the county, including even summer range up on the Stanislaus. And unfortunately, we, we often see it that, you know, we have disasters that cause lots and lots of losses to fencing every year. And so the other big aspect to that is, of course, if you want to use livestock for any sort of targeted grazing, whether it's for fuel reduction or for invasive species management, the lack of infrastructure in terms of just having physical fences does pose a problem for many. California is set up currently, I would say, for very, very large pastures. And that doesn't really make it very easy to get intensive grazing done, unless you're willing to put up either temporary wire or put in cross fencing. And so this particular technology, if you can visualize, is basically, you know, I've got my cell phone. I can pull up a particular application, and I can just use my finger to draw in a virtual fence. And just like that, that information is then sent to the cloud, is then pushed down to collars that are on the animals. And now that, basically, we have animals that will respect these virtual fences. Yeah, pretty mind-blowing stuff.
How, how do they just respect it with it telling us where it is?
Yeah.
I mean, electrical charge?
Yeah, so how that works is basically this little, hopefully the video will, will play here. Yeah, it may not work on the, the feed here that I have. But basically, the animals are trained in their, when they initially get the collars, they're trained to two things. One, as they get close to the virtual boundary, they get a series of auditory cues. And they are trained to respond to those auditory cues by basically, by turning around and going the other direction. If they don't listen to those auditory cues and they continue to move towards that virtual boundary, they will then get an electrical stimulus or a shock. And so we've been testing this technology with several producers over just the last couple of years here in this region. And it is remarkable how quickly animals learn to respect even just the auditory cues. They, you know, get this very annoying beeping sound, and they realize once they turn their head and move the other direction, that sound goes away. And, and again, if animals don't respect that sound, they do, they get a shock. The technology is really, really fascinating in the sense that it is just one way with the shock. So if an animal does go through the boundary and decides to check out what's on the other side, and then, you know, goes back to its herd, it does not get any negative response going back the other direction. So we actually just, you know, we see a lot of potential applications for this technology, whether it's targeting invasive plants. I mean, I can, you know, within minutes, set up a virtual boundary over a patch of yellow star thistle or Medusa head, stick animals in there for a couple of days or a week, as long as they've got, you know, the resources they need, like water, and potentially control that infestation. We also see it for fuel reduction projects, for reforestation, so post-fire with all of the brush regrowth. We're working on the Caldor Fire right now. We, this will be our third year in that, with virtual fencing, trying to control the amount of brush regrowth that happens after these catastrophic wildfires. You need intensive animal grazing on some of these. And in order to do that, you need either a lot more animals, or you need to be able to concentrate those, the animals that are there. So we feel that concentrating those animals is the way that is probably going to get the job done, at least initially. Lots and lots of other aspects to this technology, whether it be looking at actual animal behavior, breeding management, excluding animals. So not only can we use it to include animals in an area, but we can also exclude areas. So if we have an environmentally sensitive site or culturally sensitive site, we can keep animals out of those areas as well. And then, of course, just to reduce infrastructure costs and less need for physical fences. So we just got a grant from USDA, a pretty sizable grant, about $300,000, for doing research in virtual fencing that we just received a couple of months ago. So we're super excited to, to be testing this technology with local producers. And this information's going to feed into USDA. And they're really interested in our data, because they see this as potential. For those that are familiar with their equip cost share programs, it might be something that that also feeds into. So that's super exciting. Another project that might be of interest to, to you all is, this particular picture here is a picture that has been used a lot in lots of different publications. And actually was taken by a colleague many, many years ago of yellow star thistle. And this was actually taken here in Calaveras County. But this plant continues to, to be problematic for, for many. And we've got lots and lots of tools to control yellow star thistle. But one of the ones that we continue to look at is biological control, just because of the size and scope. I mean, yellow star thistle probably occupies about 17 million acres across the state of California. And although we can control it very effectively with lots of different tools, whether it be herbicides or mechanical treatments, biocontrol or the use of some type of biological agent to help control it or reduce it is probably the long-term strategy. So I've been working with our USDA partners on examining a new biological control agent. This is the yellow star thistle rosette weevil. So this is a picture of the little guy here on the, the right of the screen. It's a weevil, so it's got these little long snouts. But this particular agent was identified in Turkey back in the 80s. So this is basically the home range of where yellow star thistle is from, around the Mediterranean Basin. And it's been basically in isolation, in quarantine for the last 20-plus years, being studied. And basically, they study these things to death, you know, really try to make sure that they're not going to release another invasive, right? So there's lots and lots of host specificity testing that is done to make sure that it's not going to feed on other plants and all of those kinds of things. So this particular plant, or I'm sorry, this particular insect was approved for release just a couple of years ago. And then, of course, COVID happened and really just kind of threw a monkey into everything. But they did first, make their first release in all of North America, just outside of Davis, in Solano County in 2020. And then I collaborated with the USDA ARS folks to do another release here in the foothills in Eldorado County in April of 2021. And so this is just a picture of our release site. And right now, I'm basically working with that team, and we're doing our annual monitoring to basically see whether or not this insect is going to be successful. So we'll stay tuned for more information on that. This particular project is just wrapping up. This has been five years in, of data collection, where this kind of fits in with some of the greenhouse gas emission project with carbon emissions. But there's been a lot of interest on using compost on annual rangelands. And so I did a fairly large project on five different ranches, looking at whether or not compost has any impacts or basically any benefits. And so we all, of course, know the benefits of compost, whether you're in agriculture or you're maybe an avid gardener, or you just like growing plants. We all know that compost is an amazing product. It does all of these things. But one of the, the main things that we've been looking at is whether or not it can increase soil carbon. There's been a lot of research that has shown that our annual rangelands may be more carbon sinks than maybe even some of our larger forests. And so I think that really kind of shows the value as to how do we put economic value on some of these very large working landscapes. And so I think we need to do a really good job in terms of monetizing that and making sure that the folks that are doing those working landscapes and sequestering carbon get the credit that, where credit is due. So I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail on terms of how we do the different research projects. But as I mentioned, this was a fairly large project across five different ranches, private rancher, ranches across the region, where we wanted to basically evaluate compost addition, a one-time application of compost to, to annual rangelands. And so we do that by basically, you know, setting up a replicated trial and having different treatments. And so, of course, we want to try compost, but we also need to try it with nothing. So to compare compost with, if you were just to do status quo. And then we also wanted to look at whether or not you could get any added value by adding potentially some desirable seeds. And so we have compost alone, we have a desirable seed alone, and then we, of course, have the combination of compost plus a desirable seed mix, with the last treatment being the, the no treatment or untreated check. And so this is just an aerial view of one of the ranches. They all basically look something similar to this. And this, the little squares just represent those four different treatment types that I just mentioned. And of course, we then replicate those different treatments three different times so we can then get, gather statistical data to, to see whether or not there is any true effect from those individual treatments. And so one of the things, there's lots and lots of data, of course, lots of, you could see the samples in my vehicle here, just lots and lots of data collection for this type of, of research. But one of the things that we get out of this is, you know, whether or not there's any sort of species shift or changes in vegetation on the landscape. And there's a lot of data going on here, and I'm not going to dare try to go through all of it for the sake of time and just for your sanity. But what we do is we wanted to see whether or not, are we making a difference in terms of what the ultimate goal is for the land, which might be, if it's ranching, it's, you know, is it, are we changing the quality of feed as a benefit for the producer? And so this particular slide just shows every single plant that occurs on the landscape for each individual ranch. And then the different colored bars basically just shows all of those four treatments. And so we can tell whether or not an individual species is changing based on a particular treatment. And so I'll just highlight a couple of different ones here, just to give you a sense of what that means. On your far left here is a plant called fillory, and it's basically a broad stem plant, I'm sorry, a broadleaf plant that is fairly desirable for livestock producers, because it's high in protein. And you could see all of the bars are basically at about the same level. So these are the four different treatments, and this plant really didn't have any effect from those different treatments. That's basically what this is showing. The interesting one is, of course, if you look at some of the clover species, which were the predominant in that seed mix, we saw this sort of a combination effect of, we, of course, have very, very little clover out on the land. of, we, of course, have very, very little clover out on the landscape in the untreated plots. And then when you throw compost out there, which is this gray bar, I'm sorry, the blue bar is the compost only, we see about a doubling of the amount of clover out there, which we would hope to see because the clover was the predominant species in the seed mix. And similarly, if we just throw compost out on the landscape, we also see about a doubling of clover out on the landscape. But when you combine those two things and do both clover seeding and compost addition, we see a dramatic increase in the amount of clover out on the landscape. So those are kind of some of the things that we've been tracking. And although I mentioned it's just a one-time application, we want to make sure that what we're seeing is just not a one-year done, a one-year sort of change. We want to see whether or not that is happening three, four, or five years after that initial treatment. So as I mentioned, we're concluding the fifth year of data collection. So the compost application and seeding was done five years ago, and we want to see whether or not these changes are happening two, three, four, even five years after that treatment. And so far, what we're seeing, as shown here, is the effect three, four years after treatment. So the other major one of the, are the two bars on the right, and that's just been the reduction in invasive species. And what we're seeing is that, again, with the addition of compost and that seed application, we're seeing a, a reduction in both medusa head, barbed goat grass, and yellow star thistle on the landscape. And so just to make it a little more palatable from that last slide, this basically just clumps all of those plants together in these kind of broader taxonomic groups. And so I group like all of the broadleaf, desirable broadleaf plants, like fillory and other broadleaf plants, all together, all of the desirable grasses together, all of the clovers together, and all of the noxious weeds together. And so now we can see whether or not, as a group, are, you know, things like grasses going up or down as a result of the treatments, are clovers going up or down, and are weeds going up or down? And as you can see here, as I just mentioned, with the clovers specifically, we're seeing about a 200% increase in the amount of clover on the landscape when you combine both compost and seeding. And likewise, we're seeing about a 50% reduction in noxious weeds with that one-time addition of compost and seeding. So that's just kind of some of the data that comes out of some of the research that, that I do. This one here is a, a project that I find a lot of interest in. And this is, we talked, we heard a little bit about noxious weeds and invasives from Jesse Fowler just a little bit ago. And this is a project on McCallum River, looking at invasive species called oblong spurge. And I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail, but this is a, a plant that was brought in as a, as, as an ornamental from the, from the Mediterranean region back in the 1900s. And it's just a really nasty plant. It has this latex milky sap that can cause eye irritations, can cause blistering, and as is poisonous to, to livestock as well. And so it can create these very large patches like this. Some people may see this as a beautiful, you know, stand of maybe wildflowers, but to, to those that are, you know, that know this plant, this is basically a, a monoculture of a single plant that is basically choking out any desirable or native plants. So similarly, I conducted a, a research trial on this plant and basically developed some chemical control strategies for this plant. And just to kind of give you a rundown, you know, I, I basically developed a list of, of different herbicides that I want to try, different rates of that herbicide. They might be low, they might be medium, they might be high. And then, again, similarly, go out and make those applications and see whether or not they have any effect. And so this is just a picture of one of those treatments, showing how well, you know, treatment works. So again, in the forefront is one year after a treatment of a single application of an herbicide, and this is kind of like ideal conditions. There's no regrowth, there's no seedlings germinating, it's just a bunch of dead spurge.
But there's nothing else growing either.
Yeah, and that was the first year, yeah. I should have take, I should have put a picture in two years after treatment because it was full of just nothing but perennial bunch grasses. So, so that's the take-home message is, yeah, we want to bring back the, the natives in those spots. So, yeah, this, these are just the, the results of what those herbicides do. This is percent control. And so, you know, with any of the kind of tree or projects like this, we want to see, hopefully come out with a few clear winners. And as you can see on the far right, as the bars go up, we see more and more control. And there was one standout winner in all of this, and this is a, a low-volume application of an herbicide called chopper, or the active ingredient is a Mazapir, and it provided 100% control one year after treatment. One of the things that came out of this particular project is that not only did I want to try different herbicides at different rates, but we wanted to see whether or not we could apply that herbicide in potentially, I would say, a environmentally more friendly fashion. So I think with those that use herbicides, they're familiar with like a broadcast application where they may be spraying a, a plant to what we say wet. So they're basically trying to cover the entire canopy or all of the foliage with that herbicide solution. And that's, that's fine, but that also typically involves a fair amount of, of spray solution. And that spray solution, as you can see from the slide here, can be anywhere from, you know, 50 to maybe 100 gallons of spray solution per acre when you're making that type of application. So I wanted to compare that kind of traditional broadcast application with a treatment that I've been working on for a long time called a, a low-volume or drizzle technique, which basically is reducing that carrier volume. So instead of using 50 to 100 gallons of spray solution per acre, I'm basically putting the same amount of herbicide in roughly two gallons of water. So instead of 100 gallons of water, it's two gallons of water. So, so a much more concentrated solution, but much less volume of, of solution going out into the environment. And so you can see, there's all sorts of advantages of that. You know, you're not having to carry out 100 gallons of, of spray solution if you're using a backpack. Now I can treat potentially two acres with a four-gallon backpack sprayer. So just to show you what that looks like, again, this orange box represents an acre. And so rather than having, say, 50 gallons of water as my carrier solution, that I then put this blue amount, this herbicide in, so if the blue represents the herbicide, now I'm putting it into just two gallons of, of, of water rather than, say, 50. So this is just a, I trained some of our agricultural biologists with the ag department in Amador County on this treatment, and this just shows basically what that kind of treatment looks like on the, the landscape. It's kind of, again, sort of this drizzling. So instead of spraying an entire canopy, we just need a couple of drops to potentially get on an, an individual plant. And the very last one that I want to mention is a fairly new commodity that I'm working in. This is black truffles. So if you're, if you read the news, you may occasionally see articles about this huge increase in interest in truffles, particularly European truffles. And so this is a, a black truffle from Europe. This is tuber melanosporum. It's a fungus that grows underground, and it's, it grows in a symbiotic relationship with a host tree. So an orchard is planted much like this. So this is a hazelnut orchard that is inoculated with the fungus. And the, hopefully, the end result is that the, the, the fruiting bodies would, will eventually ripen and mature, and you'll be harvesting truffles underground out of an orchard like this. So there's been a lot of interest across North America, but here in California, we've got several dozen growers now growing truffles. And so for the last couple of years, I've been doing research on how to try to better understand this commodity in terms of what things might influence production. And so these are just a couple of pictures of one of the research sites and some of the different treatments that we're doing. So lastly, I'll just say, the other big part of what I do is I do a fair amount of writing. So I write peer-reviewed publications. Those are some of the ones on the left that, through the university, that are more geared for like homeowners on how to control things like poison oak and blackberries. And then in the middle columns, a variety of other different types of publications. I know Supervisor Germandy is familiar with this weed field guide. If anybody else hasn't seen it or would like a copy, I'd be happy to give you one of these. But this is basically a, a field guide for identifying both noxious weeds and also desirable forages in the region. And so I developed this, this one, I think I wrote my first version about four years ago, and then this one I just did a revision, and this one just got printed this last winter. And I am very happy to say that, you know, we're able to give these out for free to, to the public. I give a lot of donations from various industries, folks like East Bay Municipal Utilities District, our local ag commissioner, through different weed grants that they get, our local RCD, several, several agencies contribute to this, so we can give this for free. So I, I greatly appreciate all of those partnerships. And then lastly, we do a fair amount of workshops in the region, and that's just, shows some of the different workshops on the right. So just want to thank you for allowing me to come and share some of the projects that I'm working on. Again, none of this work would be, be possible without all of the tremendous partners that I have, including county government. So I guess with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. And again, I apologize for.
Oh, no. It's easy one to do. There's a lot of us.
Supervisor Stopper.
I'm always amazed by your knowledge and everything you do. I find it fascinating, Brian. He did it.
Yeah.
I never called you Scott.
Yeah, no worries.
But, but with, with the composting of land and everything, I, I mean, that's, that's very good, and there's a lot of different fashions. It's done differently up here in the hills than it's done in the valley. Big corporations like Sinagro out of Texas have done things in San Joaquin County using Class A and Class B biosolids. And I'm sure there's quite an extensive, already, research done on it.
Yeah.
They have, they have on that, and it's, but the application is different when it comes to the valley and the flatlands, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, it's an interesting aspect of agriculture that I think is still going to require some more research. And, you know, I think another, see, besides the biosolids is, rock dust is where, is another one that I think has potential interest and also applications as well. And so I'm going to be potentially starting up some research here.
With, with the biosols, I do have to say, the only thing that I see sprout out of those is usually tomatoes, because that's the only thing.
Exactly.
Right?
So true.
Thank you. I've seen other questions from the board. I just have a couple ones. We, you know, first off, thank you for all the work that the University of California does. You've been a trusted partner for ag for almost 150 years, and I consider you kind of like the, the rangeland doctor.
Yeah.
You come in, you keep it in confidence, and you help out our local agriculturalists figure things out. And this is the best stocking stuff ever. I don't have a vehicle that doesn't have this in the glove box. So thank you. Have we done any research on other commodities that might be well-suited for our environment, especially drought-related things? I know there's a lot of talk about agave.
Yeah.
And, and, and other products that, you know, we're in a savanna landscape, we don't have the best Class A soils.
Yeah.
What are you looking at?
Yeah, that's a great question. And yes, so no formal trials that I've done, but we just brought on. And so I guess one thing I'll say is, the stuff that I presented is stuff that kind of I've been working on. I'm very happy to say that I've got some new colleagues in our unit. We just hired a brand-new farm advisor, so a colleague of mine, Hardeep Singh, that's actually in our Calaveras office, that just joined us this last year. And he brings a lot of talent and educational expertise in crop agriculture that, that is going to be, I think, really, really helpful for this region, specifically looking at some of the things that you just mentioned in terms of different crops that might be potentially either new to the region, but also potentially might be more suitable for some of the drought conditions that we've been kind of seeing more routinely. And so we've been kind of strategizing, the two of us here recently, about some of those crops. And I know he's very interested to, to start looking at some of those more, more from a research standpoint. So, yeah, I would say stay tuned. I think in the next probably year or so, there's going to be some interesting work looking at that.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
And I think looking at livestock also that may, you know.
Yeah.
We all love our Angus cows, but those, those girls suffer out there in the summer.
Yeah.
So other questions? This is a, this is not action item, this is informational item. Are there any public question, public comments?
I have a question about the colors.
Yeah.
I have a quarter horse, and you could not stop her from walking through a hot wire fence. I don't care if it's on fire. So I'm just wondering, these Angus cows are thick-headed, thick-skinned. How does that, are you doing studies on the Angus cows, or are you doing it on who? I, I, I don't know. Going up and down highway four and seeing no fence, I'd be kind of paranoid about it.
And I know this can't be dialogue, I guess, from.
Find out the research.
I'm going to respond to that because I'm sure we all have the same question.
I'm just, I'm dumbfounded because I think, you know what? The dogs, okay, it works really well.
Yeah.
Humans, it probably works even better. Husbands, it probably works the best. But Angus cow is an Angus cow. It's as hard as this. And you know, I, I just would like to know about, I'd like to find out about the research too, and read about it because.
Yeah.
It could be a wonderful thing up here especially, so.
Thank you. We're going to circle back on your, your last, other public comments? Scott?
Yeah.
Do you want to wrap up?
Okay, so yeah, thank you again for the time. If you're interested in following up on some of our programs, I would definitely check out our website. We just created a new virtual fence website to share some of the research and projects that we're working on. And we're going to be, over the next probably several months, having a, a lot of short little YouTube videos, three to five minutes, showing different aspects of the technology, from, you know, the learning part to just how to do it. And I would say this product, as from, you know, the limited amount of time that we've spent with it the last couple of years, I would say that it's not for every animal. There are some animals that just don't respect the technology, and that's fine. Those animals could potentially either not use the technology, or maybe they get cold from the herd. And so, you know, but what I have seen is that we've been using it mostly on, on black Angus, and they've been very respectful of the technology, so, yeah. But I don't think it's going to work on bulls very well either.
We all, we all know that one.
Right, yeah.
I think we'll probably still keep the fences up on the highways.
Never going to place permanent exterior fences, yeah.
And nothing's ever really kept in a bull that wanted to keep, get out. Seeing no further comments, I will thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, thank you.
Always welcome to join us.
Great, thank you.
Scott. Very well, we'll move on to the final item, which is supervisor announcements. Supervisor Stopper, do you want to start?
Yes, sir. I have a report. Something happened. You can make it before. I can spend any time.
May I start now?
Please.
Nothing to report other than happy New Year to everyone. You know, going to this new year, we look forward to all the perspective moments to serve the community and spend our time and, you know, engage. So, thank you.
Supervisor Topper?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing to report. It was a great holiday season for me, everything, there's a lot of family. Got to see my grandkid for a month, it was great. Thank you.
Supervisor Ponder?
Yes, I do have something to, a couple of things to report. So first with regarding UC Extension, I'm hoping this is news. Unfortunately, we lost one of our, we lost our livestock advisor, Flavi, but she got an opportunity at Arizona State University, which only probably comes around every three decades. So she'll be, she's pretty, got a position pretty high up with the ag department at Arizona State. So with that, there is an opening, and I think they're going through recruitment. But that has not stopped the conversations with Tuolumne County and Calaveras and the UC Extension, a collaboration with the meat processing conversations. The next meeting for that with the ranchers will be February 8th in Tuolumne County. The. The ranchers have each been contacted, and they're in the loop of what's going on that have been participating. And with the transition of Flavi, Ryan, and Teresa have stepped into her role to assist the two counties and staff in that transition to keep the project moving forward. So that is, that is still actively going on. And the other items are from the CAG. I can't remember if I reported this out last month. Unfortunately, we did not get the planning grant money for the copper, copper community safe route to school. And we also did not get the money for the first round of the evacuation planning money, which was piggybacked after the evacuation assets needs assessment plan that closed last year. So, but that does not mean that the board is not going to continue to apply for opportunities. It's just we are, the board is trying to actively apply to those, but we did not get them. Segue from the evacuation plan going forward, I guess, I've had conversations with Teresa, but I want to also bring it to the board's attention. Calaveras County had not adopted the evacuation access needs assessment. Currently, right now, only one JPA number, member had adopted it, which kind of gave the signal to the CAG board whether or not the members want the board to seek those grant funding. So I would hope that in the future, we can bring that back to the board to get adopted, so that way the CAG board knows where the stands are for the JPA members. And we will not meet again until February. We're off for the month of January, so I'm sure we'll have more information at the next February evening for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Henry?
I don't have anything to report. Look forward to working with you all this next year.
Thank you. I have nothing to report, but I also look forward to working with everybody. I think we got a good, Supervisor Toffino, do you have one other thing, Dad?
I wanted to hear a report on the Barbie party.
Not everybody is invited, Gary. Some of us were left out. Very well, well, if no further ado, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.